will now come to order. Roll call, Director Hanson.
Here.
Meek.
Here.
Myers. Peterson here, Ray.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Weiniger.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Moving right into item number four, the DCSD Spotlight. At this time, I will turn it over to Superintendent Kane to introduce our awardees.
Okay, thank you and good evening, everyone. It's time again for board recognitions, and we have some amazing people to celebrate this evening. So let's get started. Dr. Stephanie Crawford-Gates, if you could come up here, our Director of Mental Health, along with Sheriff-elect Darren Weekly, come on up. The Sheriff's Office awarded Dr. Crawford-Gates the Ron King Award, and Sheriff-elect Weekly is going to tell us all about that award. So, you want to use this?
Either way. So, the Ron King Service Award was named after Deputy Ron King, who served in the Douglas County Sheriff's Office from 1989 to 1999. Ron was very involved with youth and was one of our first dare officers, as well as school resource officer. He also affected my life because when I was a police explorer cadet, he taught at my Explorer Academy. I was only 16 years old, so he made an impact on me. Tragically, in 1999, Ron was killed in the line of duty when he was hit by a drunk driver on Highway 85 while serving our community. So, this award, each year, we give to a civilian member and a commission member. And this year, we're honored to give the award to Dr. Crawford-Gates. And if I could just read the submission by Lieutenant Rob Rotherham. Dr. Crawford-Gates is the Director of Mental Health for the Douglas County School District. She's a board member of the Douglas County Youth Initiative, which is a collaborative project that partners with the Douglas County Government to coordinate local youth-serving efforts and assessing the needs of the youngest residents by envisioning a community in which youth are involved, valued, productive, protected, and healthy. She's an integral part of the Douglas County Mental Health Initiative, which was formed in 2014 to unite community partners to address unmet mental health needs. This group created the Douglas County Crisis Teams, including the Youth Crisis Response Team, which is a collaborative partnership serving all countywide citizens and schools with mental health evaluations and resources. She brought the Handle With Care Program to the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, which resulted in Trauma-Informed Response Model to mitigate the negative effects experienced by children's exposure to trauma. This is a collaborative effort between the Douglas County School District and the Douglas County Sheriff's Office to provide in-school support to physically and emotionally exhausted students who may exhibit concerning behaviors resulting from the trauma they experienced the previous night. Since February 2021, there have been over 450 Handle With Care notifications submitted. I'll tell you, as a law enforcement officer for over 29 years, this was a major void in our community with kids who have experienced trauma the night before, whether that be a domestic violence incident or something serious, and these kids are sent to school the next morning. So, this was an amazing program that was long overdue. Dr. Crawford is also a member of the Douglas County Homeless Initiative to provide services for those in our county who are homeless. She has been a critical voice in bringing that to light. The students enrolled in the Douglas County School District who are classified as homeless, and she has been a pivotal voice in bringing enlightenment and the knowledge to this often overlooked population of kids facing homelessness in Douglas County. I want to share with you, this is a major award, and we are just so honored. You go above and beyond on a regular, daily basis for the youth in our community. And from the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, thank you for all you do.
But wait, there's more. Okay, on October 13, Dr. Crawford-Gates and Douglas County Sheriff's Office Lieutenant Rob Rotherham.
Superintendent Kane, if we could, we still have a certificate from the district for the Ron King Award.
I am so sorry. Let's do that as well.
My apologies, Director Myers. Yeah, okay, come on, come on over.
All right, take two. On October 13, Dr. Crawford-Gates and Douglas County Sheriff's Office Lieutenant Rob Rotherham were honored at the 2022 Handle With Care Conference in West Virginia. The Douglas County Handle With Care Program, as you heard from Sheriff-elect Darren Weekly, was selected, in addition to the award from the Sheriff's Office, the program itself was selected for the 2022 Extra Mile Award, and both Dr. Crawford-Gates and Lieutenant Rotherham have been a critical part of the success of this amazing program. And actually, I'd like to hear from you two a little bit about the impact that this program's had here in Douglas County and on you.
All right, thank you, Erin. And I just want to say thank you to everyone for the support. You know, we're receiving this award, and I received the Ron King Award, but this is done with all the amazing people in our schools, every day working hard for our kids, and our amazing community, and our law enforcement. So, I'm so proud to be a part of this community and have everyone wrapping around kids the way we do to support their mental health, their well-being, and their safety. So, I wanted to say thank you.
Great, thank you. And as a 34-year law enforcement officer, this is an opportunity for law enforcement to do something to help out these kids. When we're on the scene of a traumatic event, oftentimes late at night and on weekends, it's a way to ensure that these kids get the support they need when they come back to the school the next day and, you know, aren't given a hard time if they forget their homework.
Well, we are so fortunate in this district to have the incredible partnership between the two of you, because the partnerships between our organization starts with people on the ground working together for the betterment of our kids in our community. So, I can't thank you both enough. Now, I don't want to miss the director's certificate, okay? Come on down, and then we will do pictures with everyone. Come on over, guys.
All right. Everyone file in.
Are we skinning up, Stacy, or do we need to? Congratulations again, and thank you so much to the Douglas County Sheriff's Office and all of our law enforcement partners. Okay. Now, we would like to thank some of the amazing volunteers who worked tirelessly to educate our community about 5A and 5B. We came so close to passing the initiative, and a lot of that was thanks to the amazing volunteers in this room who did an amazing job of getting us from 39% in May to 49.3% in November and built incredible momentum. So, will the following people please come up to be recognized? Krista Gilstrap, Sandra Brownrigg, Brad Geiger, Chris Pat, and Eric Waldert, come on up. Thank you so much to all of you for helping to spread the word to our community, for all of the incredible work that you all did. I can't, this district owes you a debt of gratitude, and I cannot thank you enough.
Thank you. You guys are amazing. I can't let you leave without hugging you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
You guys are amazing. Thank you so much. And that concludes our recognitions this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Superintendent Kane. And one last round of applause for all our awardees tonight. Okay, moving on to item number five, Acceptance of Agenda. The recommendation is that the Board of Education approves the agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ray.
Second.
Second by Myers. Hanson.
Aye.
Meek.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Peterson, aye. Ray.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Weiniger.
Aye.
Moving on to item number six, the Superintendent Updates. Superintendent Kane.
Okay, thank you. I have kind of a bunch of items tonight, so I'll go through them as efficiently as I can. First of all, this past week, we did Veterans Day celebrations. So, I'd like to start by shouting out to all of our veterans and thanking them so much from the bottom of my heart, and I know from the bottom of all of our hearts, for your service to our country. We have many veterans on our staff. We have many veterans among our parents and in our community, and we have kids that are heading to the military. So, thank you to all of our veterans, and thank you to our schools that really celebrated our veterans. The ceremonies and celebrations were really, really inspiring. Our Apple Award nominations closed last week, so thank you to everyone who nominated some of our amazing teachers for Apple Awards. We also have celebrations in athletics and activities. Our Rock Canyon High School Girls Volleyball Team finished second in the state in girls' volleyball, and we have a number of teams that are in the playoffs for football, and it is also performing arts season. So, we would encourage our public to go see a play or go see a concert at one of our schools. Our kids are incredibly talented, whether it's on the field or performing in arts or a concert, or the many other amazing activities they do. Recently, the State Board of Education passed a couple of, did a couple of things. One is they passed a new rule on the Read Act. We had been concerned that iReady would be taken off as an accepted assessment. That would have been a very significant challenge for our district. We're happy to report that iReady did indeed make the list. The State Board of Education also passed new social studies standards, and like has been known to happen here, there were lots of red lines made on the fly during the meetings. So, we are processing exactly what the final product looked like, and we will be sure to get the Board of Education a memo and to update our public as appropriate. I also want to say that over the last few weeks, we have been celebrating One Book, One District, and those activities have been wrapping up. So, I brought a copy of the book. It's an amazing book, if you haven't seen it yet. The book that we celebrated is If You Come to Earth by Sophie Blackall. And our amazing students and schools participated in art projects, sustainability activities, and even interactive sessions with the author from Australia. So, that's really neat for them. We also did videos of people reading the books. So, there is a video of me reading this book. I will confess, the first time I skipped a page on accident, so I got to do it again. I got really good at it, though. Our videos, we also had readers of the book that spoke in Spanish, Chinese, and Russian, and we did closed captioning for our deaf and hard-of-hearing. I really want to thank Tracy King and the DLMC, that is the District Library Media Center, as well as Douglas County Libraries and the Foundation for Douglas County Schools for all of their work around One Book, One District. And truly, the subject of the book is just celebrating all of the amazing humans on Earth and all of the differences and similarities between all the amazing people on our Earth. I wanted to give you an update, since there were a couple of public comments at the last meeting on the book A Long Way Gone. As you may recall, this book was challenged as a resource in our district, which is a process that is followed under policy. And so, we followed the process. There was a Challenged Resource Committee formed, and that committee reviewed the book and had representation from parents and staff members, et cetera. I'm really thankful to both the committee for all of their hard work and the parent for her perseverance. The committee did decide to leave the book as it is. That was the recommendation from the Challenged Resource Committee, and then I issued an administrative decision upholding that recommendation. And so, what that means is that the Board of Education does not, in fact, have to take any action. This book is still on the shelves, and it is still flagged for parent permission for ninth grade and 10th grade. So, thank you again to the efforts of everyone involved. It was a process that we have not seen for a very long time in this district, so it was good to go through that process, and we learned a few lessons along the way. I would like to give a shout out, and we will formally, much more formally do so in a few months, to our interim CFO, Jana Schleisner, for filling in in the CFO position, as she is continuing to do. We're incredibly grateful for her work. We did want to make sure to notify our board and our community that we have posted for a Chief Financial Officer position, both that position as well as our Executive Director of Special Education position, which, as you know, has been challenging for us to fill due to our lack of competitive pay. Both of those positions have also been given over to a recruiter who can look locally and nationally for great candidates. I received an award last weekend that I wouldn't normally talk about receiving an award, except that it caused a little bit of controversy. So, I just want to make sure to directly address that award. I was notified by a new organization, the Colorado Parent Advocacy Network, that they were giving me an award, and I'm going to read you the words. And again, it is not usually my practice to do this, but I want to make sure that our public knows what the award was given for. Since her appointment, she has worked relentlessly to foster positive relationships, open communication, and collaboration with parents, educators, and the Board of Education. Her commitment to implement and support high academic standards for all students to succeed on their individual pathways is a model in the state and across the nation. When I was informed that I was being given this award, I knew that I would need to accept it at an event on Sunday, and I certainly did. I have been asked by a lot of people, and we've discussed this in the boardroom, based on, actually, the Tabor Guide really brought this up, and I've been asked by teachers and principals, as well as all of you in the boardroom, how can we communicate to our community that our school district is not pushing any kind of woke agenda or indoctrinating students? This award was issued by a parent network that is concerned about those things in public education, and by issuing the award to our school district, I hope that is a signal to our parents, who are incredibly concerned about those things, that our school district is, in fact, not doing those things. But I also want to reaffirm that I am dedicated to empowering parent voice across our district for every single family and every single parent, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, orientation, identity, et cetera. And I always want to encourage strong, positive partnerships, and this part is really important, built on the presumption of positive intent and mutual respect between all of our families and all of our educators. I think that is the best way, working together for us to ensure the brightest future possible for our kids. Couple of additional updates. We are going to be looking at, on staff, we're going to be looking at the bullying policy. It hasn't been updated in quite a while, and so we will be forming a staff committee to review that with current recommendations and practices at the Colorado Department of Education, and we will present our findings, of course, to the Board of Education. Just two more things. Proposition FF passed in the November election, as you may be aware. We are working through the implications of Proposition FF. This proposition gives free lunch to all Colorado public school students regardless of their free and reduced lunch status, which helps families that are on the edge, and it also helps with the stigma of receiving free lunch. The things that we are working through as a district is making sure that our kids continue to have time to get through the lunch line and eat lunch, because it's a lot more kids now that will potentially be in the lunch line. We're looking at staffing impacts. We're already impacted by staffing shortages, so we want to make sure that we're prepared for the increased volume. Supply chain shortages will be a challenge, so we are working through that as well. And finally, we are looking at how the state will begin to do at-risk funding if they don't intend to use that free and reduced lunch designation to determine who's at risk. So, I just wanted to let you know, we're working on those things. And then lastly, Thanksgiving is next week, and this seems like a great time to express my gratitude, our gratitude, towards our amazing staff in Douglas County schools as they look at having a break for Thanksgiving. So, we are really, really grateful for everything that you do for children every single day, and we hope that you take a true break and enjoy Thanksgiving with their families. Likewise, I'd like to express my personal gratitude to our Board of Education, who I have personally watched fight for 5A and 5B like nothing I have ever seen, and I have a tremendous amount of gratitude, and I hope you all, too, get to enjoy Thanksgiving with your families. That concludes my remarks. President Peterson, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Kane. Moving on to item number seven, which is public comment, the first part of which will be family-specific public comment. The Board has allotted time to hear public comments specifically concerning whether DCSD will participate in Colorado's Family and Medical Leave Insurance Program, better known as FAMILY. In 2020, Colorado voters approved the creation of a paid family and medical leave insurance program. This law created a state-run paid family and medical leave insurance program that allows employees to take up to 12 weeks of paid leave, depending on the need, and up to 16 weeks for those who experience pregnancy or childbirth complications. The family program would cost 0.9% of DCSD payroll, shared equally between the employer and employee. The 0.9% premium may rise, but is statutorily capped at 1.2%. That being said, school districts and other local governments are permitted by law to decline participation in the program by an affirmative vote of their governing body, which in our case is this board. Should the board decline participation in family, all DCSD employees at their individual discretion may still choose to participate in the program at the same cost had the board opted into the program. Employees who voluntarily choose to participate will need to report their own wages and remit their own premium payments. Upon voluntary opting into the program, employees would be required to commit to participate for at least three years. We offered an opportunity for folks that signed up for public comment tonight to comment on family specifically, and we had no takers. So, at this point, I will assume that this placeholder complied with the requirement to have an open public hearing. Moving on to number eight, student comment. I think I see Nick out there, who will be speaking on behalf of the Student Advisory Group.
Thank you. My name is Nick Menzel, and I'm one of the co-presidents and part of the SAG leadership team. And so, I just wanted to give you guys a quick update on what SAG has been working on throughout the year. We've actually been very productive this year, so I'm going to start just by listing off our subgroups and just what your subgroup has been doing. So, I'll start with mental health. As you guys may know, mental health's been working on creating a class called Introduction to Mental Health and Wellness. So, they're in the process of collaborating with the staff and teachers at Thunder Ridge High School to get that class into Thunder Ridge, so it can be spread out throughout the district. They've been having some difficulties deferring the class from wellness, mindfulness, sorry, mindfulness. So, they're working through those differences, and they're trying to create the class to be different from mindfulness. So, we're able to get that into the system and through Thunder Ridge. So, they've been working on that, and they're getting very close to gain it, but we might have to push that back to be implemented in the 2024, 2025 school year. And then, next is environmental sustainability. So, they have two initiatives through this subgroup. The first one is substituting LED lights in schools and to reduce the carbon emissions. So, they're currently writing out a proposal for the implementation of LED replacements in high schools. And then, their second initiative is planting trees on school grounds to reduce carbon emissions as well. So, right now, they are emailing Public Park Service So right now, they are emailing public park services to find open land to plant on, and also emailing different partners to grant efforts for the trees that need to offset the CO2 emissions. And then next is our technology subgroup. Our technology subgroup is working on implementing Helper Helper throughout the district. So some schools use the online form of Helper Helper to track students' volunteer hours, and other schools are using the paper versions, which is less efficient than Helper Helper. So they're trying to spread the word about Helper Helper and get that implemented throughout the district instead of certain schools. And then our next is diversity and equity. They are working on creating a presentation on the introduction, to introduce the acceptance of LGBTQ. So this would be like, if you guys know about the Sexual Assault Resource Team, that program, this will be similar to that, but in regards to diversity and equity and LGBTQ. So this would maybe even be a short video series. So they're focusing on encouragement, exposure, and empowerment of people of diversity and equity. And our next is the policy appeals. So we have three different groups for the policy appeals. Our first one is focused on the dress code policy. So they're working on amending the dress code policy to make it more up-to-date and focusing on classifications and student treatment. Our next one is focusing on the IBHK policy. So they're working on passing and updating a state mandated policy on lowering dropout rates throughout the schools. So that's another part of what our policy appeals group is working on. And the next one is a new policy that we're working on proposing to the Board, which would be weighting honors classes. So they're working on setting a 0.5 weight to honors classes to incentivize students to make more of a rigorous course load. So instead of being weighted as a three, these honors classes would be weighted as a three-point, I mean, instead of being weighted as a four, these are classes be weighted as a 4.5. So this differs them from the AP classes, which are weighted as a five. So this will incentivize students to take more rigorous classes, and as a benefit, will take them, to push them to take AP classes in the future. And then our next subgroup is school safety. So right now, they're working with Chaparral, and they're placing safety kits in school classrooms across district schools. So these safety kits would consist of like a bucket with essential needs for times of like school endangerment. So these would like have like resources if classes are stuck in their classrooms for an extended amount of time. So Chaparral already has that implemented in their schools. So they're working on that to create a model for further schools in the future. And then our next is hands-on learning. So Hands-on Learning is working on developing a standardized form of a hands-on learning class. So right now, they're teaming up with Rock Canyon High School. And so they're looking at their senior studies course that Rock Canyon High School offers to their kids, and they're using that to build a model for schools to take that course and bring that into their curriculum. So this would, so they're going to talk to their senior studies teachers at Rock Canyon High School and go to each school and discuss the possibility of getting this class implemented. So the senior studies class is taking the form of an English class, but it's more of a hands-on perspective as an English credit. They do like hands-on projects, go into the community with community service. So they want to bring that into the schools across the district. And our last group is financial literacy, which is one of our smaller groups. They're working on during seminar, or also some schools call advisement, to give a presentation about financial literacy. So some kids aren't taking those financial literacy classes and are as well educated in that aspect. So they want to make a mandated presentation during advisement or during seminar, so all the students get introduced to the aspects of financial literacy. But yeah, that's all that SAG has been working on right now.
Okay, thank you, Nick, for that update from the SAG. And we'll look forward to additional updates through the year, so we don't wait till the end and just get the great thing they've been working on. So thank you very much. Moving into number nine. Sure, let's give a round for Nick, and you can go home and do your homework. So thank you. Moving on to number nine, public comment. The purpose of public comment is to balance the ability to hear diverse viewpoints from a broad spectrum of citizens throughout the district, while allowing our Board of Education to conduct business in an orderly and efficient manner. Time has been adjusted to allow all speakers the opportunity to speak during the allotted time. Three minutes will be allotted for each speaker this evening. When speaking, please remain respectful and address the Board rather than the guests and staff in the room. To respect a speaker's free speech, please do not interrupt them while they are at the podium providing comments. Mr. Blair will provide a 15-second notice prior to the end of your time, so you can wrap up your comments. When your time is up, please leave the podium. As always, if the audience wants to react between speakers, feel free to do so while being respectful and honoring the next speaker's time to speak. However, please do not engage speakers and other audience members in a disruptive manner. Attendees who create a disturbance or disrupt speakers while they are speaking will be asked to leave the room after a prior warning. And with that, let's get started. Our first speaker here will be Kristin Reed, then Tracy Ingerman, followed by Nate Jones. Ms. Reed.
President Peterson and Board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Kristin Reed. I'm the Assistant Town Manager for the Town of Castle Rock, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Mayor Jason Gray. We unfortunately couldn't have anybody from our town council here this evening as they're having their own meeting at this time, but we wanted to come and, you know, share that the council had passed a resolution supporting 5A and 5B, and to thank the school district for being such great partners to us as the town, as well as the other municipalities in the county, and to please let us know how we continue to support you as you all move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Next will be Mayor Ingerman, followed by Nate Jones, and then Sherilyn West. Mayor Ingerman.
Good evening, Board. I just am here this evening, I'm Mayor Tracy Ingerman from the City of Castle Pines, and I'm here just to express my gratitude and support of you as a Board and for the district's staff and district teachers. I know that last week may not have resulted in the outcome that you were looking for, but don't lose heart. What you do and what your teachers and staff do is very important. You make a huge impact on our community and our kids. I'm a mom of four. I have two that are still at the district and two that just graduated last year. And I know firsthand the great things that your teachers and staff have done. They've created empowered, strong, adaptable students and human beings that are moving on into the community, and I thank you for that. So one thing that I always tell my kids, and I'm sure that teachers tell their students the same thing, is that if you first don't succeed on the first try, try, try again. So I encourage you to try, try again. So thank you this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Next will be Nate Jones, Mayor Sherilyn West, followed by Mark Dickerson. Mr. Jones.
Good evening, Directors, Superintendent Kane, other friendly faces, familiar faces. My name is Nate Jones. I'm the Communications Director for the City of Lone Tree. I'm here representing Lone Tree City Council this evening. Mayor Malley wanted to be here. Unfortunately, she is also running a public meeting at this time, but I did bring a statement from her this evening. Dear Douglas County School District Board of Education and Superintendent Kane, I wanted to take a moment to relay our gratitude to you and your team for being such incredible advocates for our students and our teachers. While the results of this recent election are certainly not what you or we had hoped for, there is no question of just how diligently you worked on behalf of our community to educate voters on the financial challenges facing Douglas County schools. We tuned into the virtual town halls, we saw the tremendous outreach to residents, and we followed your efforts going door-to-door to turn skeptics into believers. We recognize it is both disappointing and frustrating to work that hard and still come up short. However, watching DCSD come together to support schools, students, and educators was inspirational. As Superintendent Kane recently commented, the progress made from that initial May polling to the votes tallied on November 8th paints an optimistic picture. Our message to you is very simple: Keep going. It will take more grit and determination, but the City of Lone Tree will continue to be a reliable partner to you in these efforts. I'll echo a sentiment Lone Tree City Council shared the evening we passed a resolution supporting 5A and 5B. Our children are our greatest asset and our future leaders. We owe it to them to ensure they have every opportunity to reach their maximum potential. As the community is learning, that will require well-paid teachers and staff that can afford to live in the communities in which they teach and an additional investment in our school infrastructure. Lastly, please express our deep gratitude to the teachers and staff who continue to make the Douglas County School District a special place for the 64,000 students they serve. They are highly appreciated and valued, and their hard work does not go unnoticed by us. Sincerely, Jackie Malley, Mayor, City of Lone Tree. Those are her comments. On a personal note, I was also at the Veterans Day Ceremony at Semron. I would like to give a shout out to Chris Zimmerman and his staff. It was fantastic. And personally, I have several kids in the school district. I spent six years here. Thank you for your continued support of staff and students. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, and thank you to Mayor Malley. Sherilyn West, Mayor West, Mark Dickerson, and then Jeff Tobor. Mayor West.
Thank you. I'm Mayor West of Town of Larkspur, and I want to kind of echo what the other towns have said. We were all in very high support of 5A and 5B. We passed a resolution regards to that, and we're very disappointed that it was not successful, but you came so close. So we just want you all to know that we are still here, going to support you the whole way through. Let us know what we can do. I personally have lived in Douglas County for 30 years, seen a lot of kids go through the school district, and really believe that even though maybe our teachers aren't some of the higher paid, they're some of the best teachers in the state. So we have great teachers. We need to support them. So you guys did a great job going out and rallying the troops. We just need to continue with it and just keep on keeping on. So thank you very much for all your work and let us know how we can support you in the future.
Thank you, Mayor West. Mr. Dickerson from HRMD, followed by Mayor Tobor, followed by Mr. Abe Layden. Mr. Dickerson.
Thank you, President Peterson, Superintendent Kane, Board members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. On behalf of the Metro District Board of Directors, I can tell you, we are 100% behind this school board and behind our teachers and our staff members. This was a difficult, disappointing, I'd say is probably the best word, outcome on the two bond, pardon me, on the two issues. But we do believe in the old adage of keep trying, because you do not cut down the tree, as I was told when I was in the Boy Scouts, with the first, or the second, or even the third whacked with the ax. You have to just keep chipping away at it until it falls. And that's the way that this type of a process goes on. I will tell you on a personal level how important Douglas schools are to me, and I think this needs to be said, how important your teachers are to me personally. We moved here 20 years ago. I had a 10-year-old daughter. She was in crisis, and I did not know it. She'd been badly bullied in the schools where we came from. And it was a Douglas County teacher that recognized her problems and came to me and said, "We need to help her." I was very ill. My wife was working long hours. We just didn't even see it, but she saw it. She saved my daughter's life. My daughter is just the most precious thing to me. And because this school district got involved and said that this student was important, I have a daughter that I have a wonderful relationship with today. And it's all thanks to you, thanks to the staff, thanks to all the teachers who have been very supportive. This is important, and I believe that our teachers need to be supported, and our staff members need to be supported, because you people matter to me. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Dickerson. Mayor Jeff Tobor, followed by Abe Layden, then Kristi Gilstrap. Mayor Tobor.
Good morning, Board, and good evening, Board. I don't know where I'm at tonight, so it's been a long day. But Board, before I get started on my comments, I just want to thank each and every one of you seven for what you do every day. The slings and arrows, you know, it's when I sit up where President Peterson sits, it's much easier than sitting out here today. But I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for all you do for our kids, for our teachers, for your staff, and for everybody in Douglas County. You know, the Town of Parker did something unique this year that we've never done before. We weighed in to the waters of the school district and the school board, and we don't like to, we like to let you stay in your lane, and we stay in ours, and we're happy that way. But as we saw 5A and 5B come up, we knew that we couldn't stand silent anymore. As we saw the inequity between the salaries of school districts just to the north of us, we couldn't let our teachers suffer, and we weighed in. And we couldn't let these schools crumble and continue to deteriorate with infrastructure. So we had to weigh in. And Board, I want to tell you that each and every one of you weighed in, and I think my arm is finally healing from being twisted behind my back at the 5A and 5B resolution. But I want to say that that goes to your passion, that goes to your commitment, and that goes to your drive. As the other members have talked to, and the other mayors have talked to, I hope that you'll consider this in 2023. You know, sometimes we don't succeed on the first run, sometimes the second, the third, but we can get there. And I think it's going to take a concerted effort of the communities, the municipalities, and the county to say, "This is good for us. Let's put everything else aside. Let's put all the other fun stuff that we talked about the other days of the year, but let's put that aside, and let's focus on our kids, and let's focus on our teachers." On a personal note, I'm a dad of three Douglas County School District kids. I have one that's now at Mesa University flying, and two that are still in Douglas County schools. And on an even more personal note, I'm the proud husband of a school nurse in Douglas County. And if you want to know why we expect that raise and they expect the, really the acknowledgement, it's not for our family, it's who she sees every day. You know, she has teachers helping her, she has principals helping her. Everybody can do a Band-Aid, everybody can do an ice pack, and that, you know, Superintendent Kane, you and your staff, that's what you've built. Everybody jumps in, everybody collaborates, and everybody works to get the job done. So let's go back in 2023, Board, let's go get this work done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor Tobor. Next will be Abe Layden, Kristi Gilstrap, followed by Jason Gilstrap. Mr. Layden.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me tonight. My name is Abe Layden. I'm Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, but I'm really just coming here as an individual to say thank you, thank you, thank you to each and every one of you. Your commitment to the kids in this community is tremendous, and I hope you feel the love. I really, it warms my heart. I mean, you hear this in travels as a Commissioner, that other places don't have the mayors and the leadership of an entire community coming together. We're friends and colleagues. We may not always agree on every issue, but you all are doing the work of public servants, and you don't get enough thanks and praise for the hard work and time that you put in to serving the people in this community, the students and the parents. Superintendent Kane, you have been everywhere tirelessly, in schools, out of schools, in all of the community meetings, and you have done such a phenomenal job of reaching out and connecting. Mike, I mean, really, the entire, everybody has gone out and poured their heart into this measure. You didn't know it was a twofer, okay? We started out with this year and maybe a little bit more to come this next year, but listen, we know there's so many partnerships between the county and the school board, whether it's school security, whether it's parks and open space, whether it's that workforce pipeline. My wife is a CNA through benefiting from the STRM Collaboration Campus right here in town, and that's an investment that you all make in higher education. We generally get healthiest county in the entire state. The reason we're not number one in the country is higher ed and affordable housing, but we'll save that for another day. But as we continue to partner, I really look forward to working with you. Know that you have my support. We'll continue to work on my colleagues as well. But thank you very much, you guys. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Layden. Kristi Gilstrap, Jason Gilstrap, followed by Sandra Brownrigg. Ms. Gilstrap.
Jason couldn't make it, so he's going to yield his time to me, if that's okay. Okay. Thank you again for earlier. It wasn't necessary, but I do appreciate it. We never would have gotten this far without Eric, Chris, Tanya, Brad, and Sandra, and all the others who volunteered and jumped in to help. I wish I could publicly thank every single one of them. This journey started for me on a Sunday in February, when the district I loved seemed to be ripping itself apart. As I pondered how we could come back from where we were, I felt God very clearly tell me through the MLO and bond. That was what's going to bring some unity back to our community. At the time, I thought that meant my work through the MBEC, but as things unfolded, it was clear it was a calling to lead this campaign. It was certainly not something I was equipped or prepared for, and I definitely didn't have the experience to say, take something like this on, so I have to give all the glory to God for how close we were to this success. And more importantly, for how far we have come as a community since that Sunday in February. While it's disappointing and frustrating to come so close and fall short, the beauty has been seeing our community come together. Behind me are some of the parents, business, political, and civic leaders who came together to support our schools. Obviously, not everyone could attend, but some came. From Angela Thomas and Lisa Neil Graves, to Abe Layden, Andy Jones, and Renee Anderson, this support crossed political divides. We had civic leaders like Holly Cluth, Callie Leba, and Pat McGraw pitch in to help. We saw this board lay down their swords and stand together to support our students and teachers, and as core, Superintendent Kane and your staff, you did the heavy lifting. Superintendent Kane, the amount of work you and your staff put in was incredible. From the work you all put into your presentation to this board and to get information to easy consumable resources that we could reference, to the countless funding presentations you gave, and plus the amount of hours you and your staff used, your personal time to help us canvas. to help us canvas, to reach every voter we could, no one can question your dedication to seeing these measures pass. Board directors, many of you worked tirelessly to help us secure funding, nail down messaging and materials, canvas, and join honking waves. I witnessed countless times where you and Superintendent Kane took flaming arrows from people who did not want to vote for this. They didn't even want you to put it on the ballot. But you stood firm with grace and courage, and you changed some hearts and minds. We would not have gotten this far without you. And I believe if we had a little bit more time, we could have had enough to see a victory last week. So now everyone wants to know, what do we need to do to get over this hill? Together, we have built a beautiful coalition, and we need to build upon that. From my perspective, we in the diverse middle need to resist the urge to retreat to our corners and allow the toxic crust on the fringes to start ripping us apart. I know there are people in this community ready to point fingers at each other to reignite the death spiral Sandra warned us about. And believe me, I have a list of people I would love to call out, but from both sides. But that's not what's best for our students or our staff. No, I'm not naive, and I don't think we will all sit in kumbaya for the next year. We all know we have some hurdles to tackle. But I want us to remember that we have a lot of people in this district who love this district and want to see what's best for our teachers, staff, and students. So let's do the hard work of listening first to understand before trying to be understood. There are solutions to be found to the hard problems if we are willing to put in the work. However, the future of this district depends on the leadership we see from you all. To have, and it depends on all of us to have the courage to call out the toxic crust on our own sides. I'm ready to put the work in that needs to be done to take the hill in 2023 and get this district the funding it needs. But I need everyone who's sat on their hands to get in the game. We don't need any more Monday Morning quarterbacks. We need people willing to jump in and help us make sure we get this done. The Invest in DCSD Coalition will press on. So if you want to help us, please go to our website or Facebook page, and let's get this finished for our students, teachers, and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilstrap. Sandra Brownrigg, Brad Geiger, followed by Jennifer Iverson. Ms. Brownrigg.
In February, I stood before you and called out a death spiral. And that was an intemperate phrase, but those were chaotic times. 15 years of political pendulum swings had destabilized the district and demoralized employees. If we didn't reverse the ship, we'd never pass funding. Turnover was going to increase, and the district would inevitably decline. And someone had to say it, and I did. Fast forward to last week. Eight months later, our local school funding ballot initiatives fell slightly short. The vote on the MLO alone was 49.28 to 50.72%. To those who said there was no chance funding for our schools can pass, you now know, and we now know, you were wrong. Funding will pass. It's only a question of when. You and we flipped that death spiral, laying the foundation for nature's strongest shape, which is a triangle. And Krista Gilstrap built a sustainable community bridge with the Invest in DCSD campaign. A project triangle is made up of quality, time, and resources. With very little time and very few resources, she delivered the highest quality campaign I've ever seen. So thank you, Krista. The messaging was spot on. The more people we spoke to, the more who supported funding. We simply ran out of time, and we lacked the financial resources to make up for the short runway. So that turnaround shows the actual strength and depth of the triangle of support for the district. That triangle is composed of representative, strong, and principled leadership at the board level. It's also composed of strong and principled leadership at the district level. And it's also composed of strong, principled, drama-free support at the community level. So what's next? We're going to pass funding in 2023. One reason we're going to do that is because 2024 is going to be toxic. I've reached out to a group called Braver Angels to learn about how people on the left and the right can have conversations about scratchy subjects. I highly recommend everybody check them out also. And most of all, we're not going to let the tension of opposing political beliefs distract us again. Funding and support for schools and students is a fundamental value for everybody. We just need to extend the word about these specific initiatives, and we will pass. So teachers, no we support you, bus drivers, social workers, nutrition workers.
15 seconds remaining.
The office staff at every school, because we honor the principals, but the office staff runs the schools. We support you, and we in the community are going to stand between you and the drama so we can pass funding in 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brownrigg. Brad Geiger, Jennifer Iverson, followed by Amy Winchew. Mr. Geiger.
Well, I certainly hoped I'd be here to celebrate. And when we lost, I went back and looked at the presentation that the MBECC put together for you in June. And we were wrong about some things. We told you we thought we'd need 107,000 votes. Turns out, we only needed 93, and we got so close. Somewhere out there, there are 1,500 voters. If we could change their minds, we'd be celebrating today. We'll change that. We were right about a lot of things. We were right about the need. We were right about the fact that the failure to pass further resources will impact our students, will impact our people, will impact our teachers. On that, I have no doubt. We were also right that if we put the message out there that education and information would move the needle, that if we put people out there to explain what happened, that the voters of this community would accept it and understand it, that the officials of this community would accept it and understand it and promote it. And you're right, we ran out of time, but we did not run out of being correct. That is a tribute to Krista Gilstrap and to Aaron Kane and to Sandra Brownrigg. And most importantly, it's a tribute to the seven of you. One of the things we were right about when we came in front of you as an MBECC was that the stories that led the newspapers and made the news about the dysfunction of this board were overstated and incorrect. That every person that sits on that podium cares about the children of this district. And that when we came to you with a need that you would work as hard as you possibly could to solve it. And you did. The only newspaper stories I saw last week were telling our story. And we will continue to tell that story. We're a long way from done with this. Over the next year, you will have disagreements, important ones. As Sandra says, you are a representative board, and not everybody agrees. But you will do it respectfully. You will do it intelligently. You will do it based on facts and not on the loud parties who seek to divide you. I urge you to listen to the public. But when you do that, I urge you to do it carefully, because the loudest voices are rarely the majority. When people come to you and complain, ask them to explain. When they come to you with grievances, ask them for solutions. And when you run into people who you believe really care about the district, adopt them, even if you don't agree with them on every issue, because those people are out there. This county cares. We put out a message into a difficult environment. We told you that in June, it got worse. But we moved the needle, and we got so close.
15 seconds remaining.
And every one of you deserves all the credit for getting us there. These people would not be here if you had not done the work. And we urge you to continue doing that, and I'm going to be here. And next year, when we have an election and it gets conflictual, remember, you can disagree without being divisive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geiger. Jennifer Iverson, Amy Winchew, followed by Tricia Ackerman. Ms. Iverson.
Good evening. I was saddened by the lack of votes. We were so close to approving 5A and 5B. I had hopes that our wider Doug Co. community would support children in their county and public schools being so essential to our nation. On Sunday, I attended the launch of a new advocacy group called C-SPAN, CPAN, sorry, Colorado Parents Advocacy Network. I felt it was right up my alley. Making the decision to presume positive intent, I sat down to listen. Looking around and over the program, my anxiety was roused. Kim Monson, the inflammatory radio personality who sabotaged our bond millevi, was receiving an award alongside our superintendent just five days after our community's lost. I felt very uneasy and conflicted. As the speakers started, I began to realize the type of advocacy this group was promoting. This wasn't the solution-oriented advocacy I am used to participating in. This event had different agenda: blame, criticism, and misinformation. You all know me. I present facts I can back up and solutions that are collaborative, open to suggestion, and a passion to keep looking for ways to support students. I witnessed a group of people who cheered at being pro-teacher, then prompted by the speakers, those same people immediately spurred on by the same panel, now purported that teachers are instructing students about pornography, that they are pushing Marxist ideals, teaching the tenants of CRT and shoving gender identities into their curriculum. The speakers mocked unions and called them communists. Attendants cheered and nodded when a speaker explicitly said, "Government schools are not safe for our children." I was sitting in the same row as Directors Williams, Myers, and Petersons, who were nodding along with the crowd. I was saddened and dismayed by the actions by the current stewards of our children's education. I am baffled that over a two-hour period, an advocacy group gave no solutions to the real issues of some students not meeting grade-level expectations. Not once was the science of reading mentioned, nor were students with disabilities. No discussions by the panel about specific curriculum nor support for professional development. No discussions about the need for smaller classrooms for these teachers they love, nor the need to fund increased salaries. Their rhetoric was being pushed, not solutions. This must stop. There are organizations that our district can decline to associate with. The attendance by members of this board and our superintendent to a group repeatedly lying about our teachers, our staff, and our schools is not going to get another bond millevi passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Iverson. Amy Winchew, Tricia Ackerman, followed by Jenny Brady. Ms. Winchew.
Hello. This evening, I'm going to be speaking about GSA Clubs. GSA stands for Gender Sexuality Alliance. Prior to 2017, GSA stood for Gay Straight Alliance. What I'm about to speak on is not if GSA Clubs should exist or if LGBTQ students should or shouldn't have a safe space. They absolutely should. But parents in the community should be made aware of the ways some GSA Clubs are being used by adult activists using the goodwill surrounding the LGBTQ social movement, using the language of LGBTQ inclusion as cover to bring social and racial activism into school districts in Colorado to indoctrinate youths into social and racial activism. The national network organization behind GSA Clubs is the GSA Network, which operates with a multimillion-dollar budget. It isn't subtle about its political motives or its racial activism. In Colorado, the Gender and Sexuality Alliance Network, which oversees GSA Clubs, calls for the abolition of police, the abolition of borders and ICE, the payment of reparations to minorities, the end of global white supremacy, and the overthrow of cisgender heterosexual patriarchy. It also states that white European men created an oppressive system based on capitalism, white supremacy, and heteronormativity. That is, the promotion of heterosexuality, the male and female binary. GSA principles include gender activism work, which includes educating youths about LGBTQ youth resources, such as puberty blockers and hormone therapy in Colorado without parents' knowledge. There are about 20 high schools and middle schools in the Douglas County School District that have GSA Clubs. Simply put, kids as young as 11 can and probably may be able to learn about this stuff. With that, I recommend the school board adopt policies that parents must be notified about their children's participation in curricular and extracurricular activities involving sex, gender, and sexuality, with the default being that parents are required to opt in explicitly to any such programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winchew. Tricia Ackerman, Jenny Brady, followed by Matthew Smith. Ms. Ackerman. Okay, I do not believe she's here, so we will move to Jenny Brady, Matthew Smith, and then we will move online with Matt Cassidy. Ms. Brady.
She sent me her comments. Can I read them?
Ms. Brady sent you her comments. You can read on behalf of Jen Brady, yes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start out first by reading the comments from Jenny Brady. She has a few points she wants to get across. First, "My first concern surrounds SEL, CRT, gender, or Marxist ideology in the classrooms. As parents and taxpayers, we deserve to know what investigations have been done to remove these materials from books, classrooms, room decor, t-shirts that teachers wear, etc. You can say that these are not in the classroom is all you want, but parents know the truth." Point two, "We need to know that the board, all seven, are supportive of parents' rights and that the money should follow the students." Point three, "We need to know that there are consequences for teachers and administrators that shut down the whole school district because they didn't like the fact that their superintendent was replaced." superintendent was replaced." Point four, "Before you put another MLO bond on the ballot next year that will cost us around $300,000, please do not do it in a recession. We also ask that you do a survey of parents and teachers, then publish it. Over half the county voted no. Ask the parents directly why they did not vote for the new tax. It would also be prudent to ask teachers why they were not more involved in getting it passed." Last, "Also, I do know in 2018, the Doug Co. Foundation donated $20,000, the Doug Co. Federation $13,000, and the AFT $10,000. They donated zero this time. I wonder why." And that's the end of the comments from Jenny Brady.
Okay, Mr. Blair, if you'd reset the clock. Go ahead, Mr. Smith, with your comments.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Board. The crust lives matter. I come to you tonight as a concerned father and community member. I would like to raise concern around the district's educational equity policy, ADB, and social-emotional learning programs embedded throughout the district. Policy ADB is essentially a broad policy that empowers select members of the community and district to advise the superintendent on how woke we should be within the district. This is evident within their bylaws. It is the mission of the EAC members to, I quote, "advise in developing and implementing systems and structures to support the critical evaluation of, and if necessary, in restructuring of current curricular and instructional resources and student programming opportunities to ensure representation, accessibility, diversity, equity, and inclusion within all Douglas County School District-approved curriculum," end quote. Moving on to social-emotional learning, SEL. If you visit the district website, you will see SEL spread throughout the district with numerous references to the Castle Model, which boasts SEL advances educational equity." And these are quotes from the Castle website. "SEL can help address various forms of inequity and empower young people and adults to co-create thriving schools and contribute to safe, healthy, and just communities." I really wish, you know, we could just go back to the golden rule of treat each other nice. Unfortunately, the equity policy has been kicked down the road multiple times at this point, but the time has come to decide as a district if we are going to continue down the path of equity in SEL, or are we going to make an evasive maneuver towards traditional values within the district. I'm asking the board to revisit Policy ADB, revisit the EAC, and take steps to remove SEL from within the district. I would like to go on to a second point here. I'll have to be quick. "I would like to recognize Director Meek's commitment to healing the community, and I've been closely watching these efforts during the most recent board meetings. I would like to keep this theme going and challenge Directors Meek, Ray, and Hanson to take a moment and apologize to the parents within this district for their actions during the pandemic. It turns out that the parents are right, and even Fauci admits it. We were constantly told that we were wrong, expelled from meetings, chastised for clapping, and there was even the lawsuit against our own county's health department. In all instance, you told us that you knew better about our children. While the science is out and it turns out that shutting things down within the district was the wrong decision, there are some of your fellow cohorts across the country asking for free pass on these wrong decisions. As a parent and recipient of several points of order from former Director Holtzman, I feel that we deserve a sincere apology from the remaining board members that shut the doors on the district and shut the doors on the educational development of our children. Thank you for your time."
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Moving online, we have Matt Cassidy, followed by Meg Furlough and Tiffany Baker. Mr. Blair, is Mr. Cassidy online?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Cassidy.
Hello, Directors.
We can, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Matt Cassidy. I'm a strategic advisor to FAIR. We've been telling this board and this community that we need to unite behind academic excellence and that all students can succeed regardless of their immutable characteristics. But tonight, I just want to say thank you. Thank you to this board, to Superintendent Kane, to the Invest in DCSD team, and so many teachers from the district who all came together to support 5A and 5B to bring more funding to this district. It was a beautiful effort where people of different backgrounds and beliefs came together to support what they all believed to be good for our kids. Thank you for the time, energy, and money that you all put into it. Unfortunately, it didn't pass. It was disappointing to see such a dramatic change in funding for the support efforts compared to last MLO effort in 2018. This team came within 2% of getting it passed with just $28,000 in contributions, where the 2018 effort failed spectacularly with nearly 10 times the funding. But now it's back to the drawing board. The good thing is that more money in education doesn't necessarily mean better outcomes. Leadership matters. Washington, D.C. ranks number three per pupil spending and dead last in academic performance. New York ranks number one per pupil spending and number 30 in student outcomes. Your locally, Cherry Creek School District has dramatically outspent DCSD, and yet our students have outperformed. The leadership of this district showed their true colors during this campaign. They campaigned tirelessly, partnered with teachers and staff, and did everything in their power to get these measures passed despite dramatically reduced financial support they received this time around. Yes, the loss of 5A and 5B is not ideal. We'd love to have more money to share with our teachers and to upgrade our facilities, but we don't, not right now. But fortunately, like I said, stats bear out that money is not all that matters. Leadership matters, and we have leadership in spades. I cannot be more confident in the district leadership than I am in Superintendent Kane and her administration. She and her team put a strong coalition in place, created unity. Thank you to this board for putting her in place. To any parents or organizations who want more unity or wish these measures had passed, stay engaged, get more engaged, support this board, support this administration, and you'll support your kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. Meg Furlough, followed by Tiffany Baker and Robert Marshall. Is Ms. Furlough online?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Kane. I echo the disappointment that 5A and 5B were unable to be passed. I wonder if it would have had a better chance if there was not misinformation of woke ideology and critical race theory in schools printed in the Douglas County Voter Guide. Perhaps the reason this narrative is going around is because it was part of the Kids' First Campaign talking points, as well as the topic of secret binders at your Estes Park retreat. Now, not only that, Superintendent Kane, along with Directors Peterson, Myers, and Williams, attended an event to receive an award from the Colorado Parents Advocacy Network alongside other politically charged guests such as FAIR, 1776, and Freedom Works, to name a few. Superintendent Kane preaches about assuming positive intent. It is really hard for the community to trust you and assume positive intent when you continue to associate with these highly political and partisan groups and ideologies. If you want to stop this narrative, please stop associating with these groups, and please stop using the excuse that it is for the benefit of future funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Furlough. Tiffany Baker, Robert Marshall, followed by Ursula Kukos. Is Ms. Baker online?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, Directors. Looking at the DCSD Board of Education Legislative Priorities, Item C under Safe, Positive, Culture, and Climate, it is concerning that the word exclusively has been removed in the draft and the wording "security officer" is used instead of "school resource officer." There are school districts in the state of Colorado that train their teachers to be "school safety officers," SSOs. President Mike Peterson suggested during the August 23 BOE meeting that he would be open to discussions on allowing SSOs to carry guns on campuses. During the November 1 BOE meeting, President Peterson suggested, in addition to the legislative priorities, anything that can legislatively promote, fund, or increase training, information sharing, readiness. I think it is important to read the article, Thompson School Board Passes Armed Staff Resolution: All District Employees Potentially Eligible. This article is from Page 2 and suggests a workaround on how teachers in Colorado can become volunteer school safety officers. Page 2 interviewed Laura Carno of Faster Colorado, a program promoted by new sheriff-elect Darren Weekly to train teachers on carrying guns on school campuses. It is important for our community to know if our school board directors are wanting the state legislature to help fund training of school staff to carry guns on campuses and exactly which staff members, directors, would like us to include. Funding from DCSD to Ascend Classical Academy is scheduled to end at the end of this school year, so community members will be listening to see if DCSD brings Ascend Classical Academy back under the school district's umbrella in order to continue that 25% per pupil funding while allowing volunteers to continue carrying guns on their school campus. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Robert Marshall, Ursula Kukos, and the last commenter for the evening will be Lorraine Bowle. Is Mr. Marshall online?
Yes, sir, he is.
Okay. Mr. Marshall, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to express my deep disappointment and the poor judgment in attending that meeting the other day at the St. Morrie Catholic Church. After you all had put on a great show of letting the community know that you did not have CRT issues in the schools, to have the superintendent actually go and accept an award for defeating that imaginary dragon sends the complete opposite signal to everyone and only a few days after the bonded MLO went down in flames. So it's very disturbing that you would show that kind of leadership and poor judgment in accepting such an award. The second item I wanted to address real quick is the lawsuit. I'm very shocked, and when you go into executive session, you really should probe your attorneys and ask what the hell they're doing. When they ask for an extension to file a summary judgment motion on the last day when they were supposed to file it, and they've had three months, doesn't show much ability to pursue a lawsuit with any kind of credibility. I don't know how the judge is going to rule on the extension, but we certainly aren't going to continue to allow us to be on a goat rope. And finally, along that same lines, the discovery request seemed to be just an effort to increase the billing for this law firm. And again, I'd probe that. You know, asking us, we're not going to even respond to it at the end of 30 days, and you can fight it out and spend a lot of money, but it's completely irrelevant. Asking me to admit that I'm receiving financial support from the Douglas County Federation to bring the lawsuit, asking me to admit I receiving Colorado Education Association funds, and from the AFT Colorado, and from the National Education Association, none of those are relevant, but I'll tell you right now, the answer's no. The person funding it is me and 71 donors that you can easily go find online, some of them anonymous, but none of that's relevant to whether you broke the open meeting law. So again, when you go into executive session, I probe the quality of representation you're getting because it doesn't seem like its legal representation is for political purposes and for them to run up the bill. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Ursula Kukos, and then Lorraine Bowle. Is Ms. Kukos online?
Yes, she is, sir.
Ms. Kukos, can you hear us?
Good evening.
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Hello?
Ms. Kukos, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Hello?
Mr. Blair, if you would communicate with Ms. Kukos. We'll skip to Lorraine Bowle and come back to Ms. Kukos.
We can hear you, Ms. Kukos.
Oh, wonderful. I wanted to also just reiterate that I'm very sad that we didn't get the funding, and thank you to our leaders for really pushing for that funding. I think we can get it the next time if we all pull together. One of the things I wanted to speak about tonight is the new social studies standards that Colorado has passed, and I do know that Colorado does not set curriculum or choose textbooks, that it is up to the district. So I'm wondering what this means for DCSD. I think that these standards, if implemented, could divide students by race, ethnicity, and introduce ideas about sex and gender at much too young of an age, potentially in violation of parents' values. I fully support our schools having courses available for children who want these courses, children and families able to choose to align with these new ideals and perspectives or not. I understand that there are children who would like to hear about similar people with their own backgrounds and have classes that are geared towards this, but there are also children that don't want to hear about this. So I think that there should be a choice if we're going to add these things to classrooms because there are definitely people that don't want to learn about this stuff. Because history is made up of facts, not opinions. There are different perspectives, but there are not different versions of history. History is based on facts and time. Offering great perspectives is wonderful, but in history, things either happened or they didn't. Revision of history is not history at all, and I don't want my children taught things that didn't happen. I appreciate perspectives, but I would appreciate for my children to learn what actually happened in history. So I want to know what this means for our district, what stance DCSD will take with these new standards, and thank you again for all of your hard work. You're much appreciated. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Ms. Kukos. Final speaker for this evening will be Lorraine Bowle. Is Ms. Bowle online? Ms. Bowle, can you hear us?
Ms. Bowle, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Lorraine Bowle, State Coordinator for FAIR, the Foundation Against Intolerance and Racism. I'm commenting tonight on the great strides taken in the past year on creating a culture of academic excellence. During the October 11 board meeting, Director Meek took issue with a voter guide that suggested woke curriculum is in DCSD and admonished the majority board members to rebuke this sentiment. It was an awkward exchange, and it was unnecessary. The culture of individual excellence and inclusion resolution, which was put forth in January, is meant to prevent this illiberal and divisive ideology from finding its way into our schools because, at the time, it was at our doorstep. It was not an imaginary dragon bob. One of the primary tenets of critical race theory, or CRT, is prioritizing group identity over the individual, which was a focus of the Gemini Group Professional Development Session last year, suggesting that groups of individuals who have similar immutable characteristics such as skin color or ethnicity tend to think and act alike is insulting and derogatory. The resolution counters this regressive position by stating the following. "Our mission requires freedom from any policy or practice that wrongfully imposes stereotypical beliefs, actions, and experiences of an identity group upon an individual student, and we should promote our common humanity to include achieving unique potential without force to quality of outcomes." CRT also promotes social activism, which is a focus of the No Place for Hate program. Social justice is concerned with how power and domination operate and suggests that individuals are victims of structural discrimination and therefore have no agency or dignity. The resolution counters this illiberal position by reminding us of the following. "The United States was founded upon the values of equality of opportunity where all individuals are created as equals and endowed with inalienable natural rights, as proclaimed in the Declaration of Independence and enshrined in the United States Constitution." Another example of this illiberal ideology being at our doorstep was a privilege walk that took place one year ago. This activity inculcates the idea that certain immutable characteristics such as skin color or sexuality determines a person's status, whether privileged or victim, and is supposed to highlight how people benefit from or are marginalized by systems in our society. Instead, it produces feelings of shame and guilt, qualities that don't lend particularly well to a safe learning environment. Our parent community confirms that the distractions of social justice activism and group identity politics have lessened in DCSD, thanks in large part to the change in leadership, and we're much closer to attaining a common culture based on fairness, understanding, and humanity than we were one year ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowle. That ends public comment, and at this point, we will take a 15-minute recess and reconvene at 6:35. And at this point, we will take a 15-minute recess and reconvene at 6:35. ... Education will come back into order. And we are now on item number 10 in Consent Agenda. Item number 10 is adoption of Consent Agenda staff recommendations detailed in Agenda items number 11 through 21. Do I have any motions concerning Consent Agenda?
Motion to approve items 11 through 21.
We have a motion by Ray.
Second.
Second by Hanson. Take the roll. Hanson?
Aye.
Meek?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Weiniger?
Aye.
Passed seven to zero. Moving to item number 22, which is approval of minutes. The recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the board minutes as presented. Do I have a recommendation, or do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Williams.
Second.
Second by Myers. Hanson?
Aye.
Meek?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Weiniger?
Aye.
Passed seven to zero. Moving into study action items. We now have item number 23, which is the response to the board response to bond and MLO election results. We have a 20-minute discussion scheduled at this point. I'll open it up for any comments from board directors. Director Hanson?
I'm sure we can get into the specifics, but I think it was pretty incredible that we had so many leaders from so many different parts of our community this evening. And I personally just think saying thank you for their support and for taking the time to show up tonight is warranted as a part of this discussion.
Yeah, absolutely. I really do appreciate the, all of our community, town, and metro district members coming out or their representatives, not just for support of this board, but more importantly, to indicate their continued support for these measures, which are for our staff and ultimately for our students in our community. So to have the result that we had, to get so close, again, 49.3 to 50.7 on the MLO measure, bond just slightly behind. And to know that our community continues to stand behind these measures in this district was very reassuring, I think, for the seven of us. But it's not about us. It's really about our staff and our students. And I'd like to thank those that are still listening out there. Thank you for coming out and showing your support. Other director comments? Director Weiniger?
Yeah, definitely. Thank you to everyone who supported it. I'm sad it didn't pass as well. I'm happy that it did get a little closer than what the poll showed earlier. And I have heard there's some concerns here and there about, well, funding didn't pass. What does that mean? And I know that, at least in quarter one, that we just approved on Consent Agenda, our financial showed our expenses were below budget, so we're not in a bad place. So we don't have to make any changes soon. So I just want to give reassurance to people who are worried. Does that mean I have a job next year? You have a job next year. And if we ever do have to come down to making tough decisions because we didn't get this funding, I haven't heard any whispers of that, but if it does come down to it, I just want to give reassurance that we won't repeat mistakes of the past of when we had a lot of teachers leave because of some bad decisions. So I think a lot of members here are familiar with our history, and we definitely will never make decisions that would hurt our kids and hurt our teachers and staff and hurt this school district. So I'm all for wanting to try again. Obviously, that's not my decision, but I definitely would like to work towards that next year.
Director Myers?
I also wanted to say thank you to everybody that stepped up and helped us canvassing, walking, putting out flyers. It was a real community time, and I had the privilege, the day after the election, to visit four schools, which I was a little apprehensive about. But I met with such positive cultures and principals and teachers out that just thanked us for the hard work that we did. And they just, they love the cultures of their schools. And while it's a disappointment, it's something that we can go forward with. And they know that the board's behind it, and it's something that's going to help them get paid better and that we do care about what we put on the ballot for them. So I wanted to say thank you to the teachers and to the parents that helped, and our board members and our cabinet members. So thank you so much.
Director Meek?
Are we doing both reflections and thoughts about moving forward or just reflections?
Yeah, I think some reflections. Just for folks jumping a little bit ahead, we do have a board retreat on the 30th. And one thing that I'm definitely adding to that agenda is a more in-depth reflection. So again, not a blame and punish session, but certainly a what can we do better as a board? What do we believe as a board? Hopefully, we can come out and have an official statement after that retreat, hopefully in December, indicating what we intend to do as a board. But also to look at other things in lieu of compensation, things we can do in addition while we're looking at next year. Bit of a brainstorming session around attracting, retaining, and rewarding our teachers and staff. So that'll be on the board agenda, and we'll do a deep dive, or excuse me, the retreat agenda, and we'll do a deep dive then. But go ahead.
So I'll cover both thoughts ahead as well in my quick comments. First, I just really want to provide a sincere thank you to our Mill and Bond exploratory committee members for their tremendous efforts that led into the start of the 5A and 5B campaign. From there, we had Ms. Gilstrap step up to lead the campaign committee and organize the efforts. Our superintendent put in countless hours in her outreach. And I can't name everyone involved. There were so many staff and community members and parents who stepped up to help get the word out. So that's sincere thank you. As we know, tax measures are challenging to pass in our community, and we had many hurdles to overcome, as evidenced by the early polling numbers that we had. In fact, looking at those numbers, it seemed to me at the time that it would take multiple years to move the needle as much as we needed to move the needle to be successful. And while disappointed that we're not able to get 5A and 5B across the finish line, I'm genuinely impressed with the progress made in our community and the community's support, and believe with my whole heart that we can be successful in a year if the board acts responsibly, if we continue to engage and build authentic relationships and partnerships with families in our community, if we engage our staff in decision-making processes, we can be successful in future efforts. I'm certain of that. And I think I'd be remiss if I did not bring up the current controversy that both Superintendent Kane brought up and many of our public commenters about the event that was held on Sunday, with it being divisive and feeding into the rhetoric that really fed into our election challenges as well. While everyone talks about caring for our teachers, you know, what does that really mean? Just today, a report came out that pandemic anxiety was higher for teachers than for healthcare workers. That really surprised me. I want to point out that Superintendent Kane and the board directors that attended that event on Sunday, those kinds...
Director Meek, can we keep this to reflections on 5A and 5B and not things that have occurred since then?
The con argument was all about that. So I think it does feed in, and I'll try to be really brief in that regard. I just think it connects our community to being part of a national witch hunt to demonize teachers who join their profession because they believe in public education, and their whole heart is in public education. And it's everything that equity is about. And we cannot legitimize those comments that were made on Sunday about teachers bringing pornography into the classroom, about violating parents' liberties.
Again, Director Meek, I'm going to ask you to please discontinue this subject and just reflect on 5A and 5B.
Sure.
Thank you.
And I will bring this back up when we're looking at... And I will bring this back up when we're looking at the legislative priorities, because it really does feed into the language that's proposed on those. So looking forward and thoughts for moving ahead, community polling to understand why those who didn't support it, didn't support it. Was it the economy? Was it a belief that the district truly does not need additional funding? Was it a lack of trust in the board? We really need to understand why those who voted no voted no, in order to help us understand how best to move forward. I think our Community Connections Plan that we're working on is a great start about connecting with our community, because it isn't educating our community, it's about creating meaningful relationships with everyone in the community. And I think that's not about a one-time campaign that you roll out right before an election, but it's an ongoing process. So I'm really genuinely excited about that, that work that we have underway. I too visited four schools the day after the election and want to express that teachers genuinely wanted to thank the board for all of their work and for supporting 5A and 5B. I asked about ideas that they had moving forward, and some of those, which I think we'll go into depth at the, at the retreat that's coming up, but questions came up around whether there's one-time money available to invest, are there partnerships that can be established or strengthened that will move us forward in building a stronger climate and culture for our staff? Are there other costs, such as legal fees, that can be invested back into our schools? There's a myriad of opportunities that we should consider as we contemplate next steps. But this conversation really needs to be much, much larger than the seven of us, it really needs to be with the entire community. And lastly, a truly responsible board will dig in at this point in time in its governance practices to make sure that we are doing everything possible to shape a meaningful future for DCSD students. We owe everything to that. That is our duty of loyalty to the entire citizens in our district, and I look forward to future conversations on this.
Director Williams.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say how incredibly proud I was of the entire district and the community for coming together and being able to put our differences aside and really band together around 5A and 5B. And even though it didn't pass, I think we made huge strides. I personally appreciated all the conversations I had with community members at the education sessions that Superintendent Kane put on, door knocking in the schools, pretty much everywhere that I went, so just thank you for those. And I also wanted to reassure you as one director, this, all the staff, teachers, IAs, EAs, nutrition, I mean, I could go on and on, bus drivers, that I, as one director, will continue to fight for you and to help make this district competitive with, with our neighboring districts. And you have that as a promise from me as one person. And then just to kind of touch base a little bit about what I've heard in some of the schools when I've been out there, is that the one thing that they're nervous about after, after the elections was that, are we going to go back to just being this divisive board where we're just fighting one another all the time? And I just want to say, I, as one person, I'm not going to get caught up in the, in the political stuff, and I think that we should all be very careful not to do that and not to be pointing fingers, but trying to understand. And specifically to you, Director Meek, tonight, this is, that's not helpful. I'm happy to have a conversation of what I took from CPAN, but I'm not gonna, I'm not going to get caught up in this, and I think that we need to show the community that as seven board members, we are here for the right reasons, and that is first and foremost our children.
Director, did you have any comments?
Sure, no, it's, it's, there's a lot of things to applaud. I would agree, and I would agree with the, the comments, and certainly I think the, our campaign group does deserve tremendous accolades. They were in a very difficult spot in terms of not being financed the way previous campaigns have been, and yet they did just a remarkable job. Superintendent Kane, I believe the accolades are well-deserved. You have worked tirelessly, and, and certainly your messaging is so clear for people to really understand, and I, and I can't thank you enough for that. And I also want to just send some accolades to you, Director Peterson, because I know you were out there working with our fellow elected officials to get the kind of support we heard tonight. I know that was you working behind the scenes to really convince a lot of people who otherwise have not been necessarily supportive, but turned them to the point of where they're endorsing. Our district, I think, is huge, so I want to say thank you for those efforts, because I know you have worked tirelessly for that as well. And, and quite honestly, was pleasantly surprised that it was as close as it was. I think we probably need to question polling, probably, because I think sometimes when we look at what happened in statewide elections and the national elections, everybody was somewhat surprised with a lot of the results that a polling would have said otherwise, but I think that does deserve a lot of applause. I'm looking forward to us going more in depth with looking under the hood at what this all means, because I certainly think that there's, tonight, it's obvious we wanted to set the tone that the glass is half-full, but there are those that also view it as half-empty. And I think sometimes we, we shun those people or we look down on those people, and, and we need to listen to them just as much as those people who are the optimistic, pro-positive, you know, let's carry on. And so my worry, quite honestly, is that we not wallow too much in just really trying to find the positives that we don't forget, that we really need to dig deep and really try to understand. I really think it'd be worth our while to really compare the election results of 2018 to 2022, because we see some margins that we lost in 2018 that actually narrowed, and so, although I, I think it's, it's okay for us right now to compare it to the polling that was done, but that was only 400 people. The 2018 election, similar to this election, was 70% of, of the people that could vote. And so I think, I think there's some real benefit for us to have some hard conversation about what is that? What does that mean? How did we lose some of those voters that voted in 2018? How did we lose, what's up with that? And, and then to listen, to really understand why they may have chosen not to support this time around. But I know that's for a different day. I mean, I do want to end with just saying, I agree with all the sentiments, there's a lot to be proud of in terms of what was accomplished, there's a lot of people that deserve a lot of accolades for carrying this campaign, and I would certainly echo those. But I'm looking forward to now, moving forward as well, and really digging deep to understand. I also want to just capture Director Williams' plea that this board continue to work as we did for this particular campaign. I brought to this board a proposal that said that we needed to look at our decision-making process, that we need to avoid doing four-three votes, that we need to strive for consensus. And I, and I think that's what happened with 5 and 5B, we found consensus, we found common ground. But I agree with Director Williams, I think that should be our process. You know, you can ignore my, my plea to put it in policy, but I think as long as we strive to work towards consensus, I think our community will continue to support us for the next 12 months. But I do think the next 12 months is going to be indicative of what happens in November '23, and we've got some, we've got some hard issues that we haven't dealt with, that we're going to have to deal with. And I would just, my plea would be the same as Director Williams, is that let's not allow ourselves to get into a we-they kind of mentality. Let's really, let's really work hard to find the common ground and reach consensus and not dismiss majority versus minority. So those are my only comments, I'm, I'm very excited to see what we'll do in the next 12 months.
Yeah, and just to wrap it up, I agree with what you said, Director Ray, we need to not just listen to those that were for it, get more of those, we also need to change some more minds. And the one thing I recognized out knocking doors or engaging people is, when people were willing to listen, we were changing minds, we were moving people from, I'm really against this, to, you know what, I might consider this, or people from, I don't know, I'm not sure, to, yes, I'm firmly for these measures. And I think with a little bit more time, we can sway not just that extra 1,500, 2,000 votes we need, because we were that close. I mean, I pulled up the, the latest results on my phone, 90,105 people for, 92,739 against, 182,000 people voted. And if we put this on next year's ballot, we know last year, we only had a little over 120,000 people come out for school board elections. And if we have the people come out that are interested and invested in our schools and in our students and in our staff and our community, and we even retain 70% of those votes, that this thing will clear. Don't want to be Pollyannaish, don't want to be overly confident, but I am optimistic that we can get this done next time. Last bit, I think, other than the fact that we didn't get the, the financial and the compensation things that we were asking for from the taxpayers, what our MBECK did to model what a, you can call it whatever you want, bipartisan, nonpartisan, diverse, whatever group can come together on a common issue, I think Sandra Brown Rigg and her folks really set a good tone for what can be done when people have common interests. I agree with Director Ray also on, you know, this board, I think, has been a good model over the last months in finding common ground. We won't always find common ground, we won't always have 7-0 votes, but we can disagree respectfully, and, and this little thing, the norms came out of this, right? This little sheet that we've been generally abiding to as a board, you know, we can always get better. Thank you. And Becky's reminding me of one norm, we are now past time by two minutes, but I will just quickly wrap up and say, one of those norms is assume positive intent. We heard it from speakers tonight, it's something that is on Superintendent Kane's big list of things for the district, and I think we need to continue to do that as board, and we need to do that as community members. We, I believe, heard some community members speak tonight that did not assume positive intent, and if we can start with that as the basis for conversation, then we can have a conversation. So I will end in saying thank you to the other six board members. I am also very aware of how hard folks up here work to get this done, and I, and I hope you take a couple weeks off for Thanksgiving, but let's get right back to it, if we're going to get right back to it, and recommit to these initiatives. With that, I am two minutes over, probably three. Thank you, Director Myers, and we will move into item number four, which is the universal preschool update, a 20-minute presentation followed by 10-minute Q and A, and at this point, we will turn it over to Deputy Danell Hyatt.
I am joined by our Director of Early Childhood Education, Lisa Graham. She will be co-leading this important update for all of you. So we are here this evening to provide you the information that we have currently around universal pre-kindergarten programming and what that is looking like for the Douglas County School District as we know of it today. So I'll talk about that in just a little bit. But before I get started, in the spirit of gratitude, I would like to just thank all of our early childhood educators in the Douglas County School District. I had the opportunity on October 31st, our district PD Day, to join them at the PACE Center, where they were participating in professional learning and development, led by Lisa Graham, and they are just a truly phenomenal group of passionate educators supporting our very youngest learners in this district. And I encourage you, as you're doing all of your school visits, which I really enjoy seeing and hearing about, to go into early childhood, go into a preschool classroom if you get an opportunity when you're visiting, because you will get to see firsthand the passion of our early childhood educators. So I wanted to start with that. Thank you. So our intentions this evening are to give you an update about UPK. Why are we talking about UPK as it is right now? Who is responsible for coordinating UPK in the Douglas County School District? Who's eligible to participate? What's the timeline for implementation? What does the current state of preschool programming look like in the Douglas County School District, and what are our recommendations? And I want to couch this in, there are a lot of evolving factors happening right now at the state level in regards to UPK. There's a Rules Advisory Council meeting happening this week on Thursday, where there will be guidance provided around some of the critical aspects that are yet to be determined with UPK, followed by a hearing, a rules hearing next Monday. So in my ideal state, this presentation would be two weeks out, because we are sharing what we know today, but it is a very dynamic circumstance that's occurring, and we will, of course, keep you updated as we know more and how it will impact the Douglas County School District. And so with that, I'm going to hand it over to Lisa.
So starting with the why, is this began several years ago with Prop EE, which was the tax on nicotine and nicotine products, including vaping and vaping products, and that the tax revenue garnered from that would be used to fund the UPK initiative. And House Bill 211304 created a new State Department that just began earlier this year and is the Department of Early Childhood. It is separate from Colorado Department of Education, and it is separate from the Department of Human Services. It is its own state entity that is specifically designed to oversee the early childhood arena. And we know that the research that shows that children who attend a high-quality preschool will have better outcomes, both post-secondary outcomes, they will have less likelihood of experiencing poverty or be in the criminal justice system. And there is a RAN study that indicates that for every $1 invested in early childhood will yield a societal return of anywhere from $1.08 to $17.07. It's a phenomenal return, just to invest in our littles. This, we thought, was important to show you, is the organizational structure. So this, and I'm not sure if there's a laser on this, so I'll just indicate at the top, is our Douglas County Early Childhood Council. And here today in our audience is Diane Smith. You may know her as one of our retired administrators. She is our, we're waving, everybody's waving, hi Diane, she's back, is, she is leading that charge as our Director of the Early Childhood Council. Under that DCECC organization is the local coordinating organization, the LCO, and that is headed as, by another one of our retired administrators, Gigi Whalen. See, great retired administrators always come back. And so that LCO really has the primary charge of coordinating the initiative for finding out all the slots available throughout the county, not just the school district, but the entire county of Douglas County. Underneath that, you'll see the different type of program entities. Douglas County School District is one type of provider, and underneath Douglas County School District, we have both early childhood and BASE, which is the before and after-school enterprise, as well as our charter schools. There are also community-based programs that are a part of this, which are programs like your kinder care, Primrose, Goddard's, La Petite, those that are in the community, our private faith-based organizations like our Little Blessings and Colorado Christian Academy. And then it also includes our in-home, so our family, friend, or neighbor care providers, as long as they're licensed. So any licensed childcare facility can opt into this program. So all of those in the... So all of those in the entire Douglas County community area are a part of this initiative. So beginning with next school year, the 2324 school year, the Colorado Department of Early Childhood is slated to fund a minimum of 10 hours per week for any age-eligible four-year-old child. And that age eligibility is without October 1 cutoff, similar to how our kindergarten has a five-year-old by October 1 cutoff. Early childhood is a four by October 1. Similar to how kindergarten is non-compulsory, preschool is also non-compulsory for families. So it is optional and voluntary for any family to participate. It is also voluntary for programs to participate. Programs are not required to have to opt into the UPK initiative to participate. Some children, and this is part of the yet-to-be-defined, some children will be eligible for an additional amount of hours, the specific amount of hours yet to be finalized, or the specific funding allocated for those hours yet to be identified. We're hoping to learn more on Thursday and at the hearing on Monday. But some of those factors that we're looking at for students, what used to be couched under the Colorado preschool program is now shifting over under UPK. And these are some factors of what some of those additional eligibility factors might consist of, which would be low income, if they're a dual-language learner, or the in-home language is a language other than English, a student who has an IEP, a child who is currently in foster care, or who is experiencing homelessness. So the intent is for families to have an option, which is why it's critical to have a mixed delivery system. Mixed delivery means there is not one size fits all. There is not one specific program that is eligible to participate. So that's why we have in-home, as well as community, as well as district and charters and faith-based, and all types of programs are encouraged and invited to participate in this so that families have the widest array of options available to them to make the best choice for their own child. So any licensed childcare provider is eligible to opt into this. The quality standards for those programs has yet to be defined. The Rules Committee or the Rules Advisory Committee is expected to begin in January, from January through August, to chunk those quality components into more manageable pieces so that programs aren't inundated with all of the quality standards at once, so that they can grow into having and meeting those quality expectations for their programs. The projected enrollment, we are currently forecasting at what our current 2022 enrollment is at and holding flat for that based on our historic trajectory and the projections that we've had with birth rates, et cetera. And so some of the analysis that we've used has been our historic enrollment trends, what our families have currently chosen as their first-choice options of where programs are available, and then again, those birth rates in Douglas County. So the anticipated eligibility of students is between 2,400 to 2,700 age-eligible four-year-olds, according to the birth rate. And it's at about 75 to 80% of the four-year-old birth rate, because they know some families will simply not choose to opt into a program as this, they just want to care for their kids at home. So the LCO is actually the one who is in charge of determining that county, the Douglas County capacity, and identifying the gap between the capacity that currently exists, this birth rate for eligible students that we may have, and trying to then figure out how to narrow that gap. Currently, we are projected to be on par with being able to serve all of those 2,700 age-eligible students within the county, given all of those options available for families to choose. This is an example of a heat map that was designed using only one set of data points, and this is just the early childhood education data points for where we currently have programs available, families who made that a first-choice selection. So you can see the areas that are in orange or in red. It may look very similar to what you would imagine seeing with the capacities otherwise that you've seen with the Long Range Planning Commission. Our Parker area, growing, capacity needs identified in early childhood, same way that they are for school age, similar down in the Clear Sky and the Meadowview areas, and Roxborough in the Sterling Ranch area. This is showing what our current actual capacity is for UPK, given what we have right now available within Douglas County School District. So on the left-hand side, we have our early childhood education sessions. We have 67 classrooms housed in 45, 44 different buildings. So we serve three-year-olds in the morning. We have half-day programs, three-year-olds in the morning and four-year-olds in the afternoon. So our four-year-olds, we would have half of the classroom available for students with IEPs and half of the classroom available for students without IEPs. In the mornings, we have half of the classroom space available for students with IEPs who are three, and half of the classroom available for students without an IEP. We also have, in the district, our BASE, the Before-and-After-School Enterprise, has five pre-kindergarten classrooms that are full-day programs for four-year-olds currently. So that's why you see that additional amount between 115 to 120 capacity in their programs. So for district programs, we have 1,192 total available spots for four-year-olds right now. On the right-hand side of the chart, you see the availability and capacity within all of our charter locations. The comparison, some people are asked, what's the difference between an early childhood program and a BASE program? So this is a very small snippet of some of the comparisons between. Both of our programs are rated at a quality rating of a three, which is the beginning of that initial quality from the Colorado Shines. We have 67 classrooms in 44 buildings. There's a list there that's attached. If you were to open it, it would show you where all of those are located. For BASE, there are five classrooms at three locations, Cougar Run, Coyote Creek, and Mountain View. The number of students in an early childhood classroom, again, we have mornings and afternoons, is 16 students, and there are two adults at all times. In addition, we have our special service providers. Those are your speech therapists, your occupational therapists, et cetera, who provide those specialized services to students with IEPs that also go in and join those classrooms. The ratio in our BASE programs are 24 students to two adults. They also have program managers available within their regions to help provide additional support as needed. The length of time or the hours a day, our early childhood sessions are 2 hours and 45 minutes, Monday through Thursday. BASE serves students for 10 and 1/2 hours per day. So they serve students from 7:00 AM to 5:30 a Monday through Friday, and they also serve students during PD days, during breaks, et cetera. The tuition is for early childhood on a monthly rate. Some families can choose two days a week, either Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday, or they can choose four days a week of Monday through Thursday, and their rates are listed there. And in BASE, they have a daily rate, where if they're there for the full day, they have a daily rate. And they currently are able to serve some of our students with IEPs in their BASE program. We're piloting that to see, does that work? How does that work? Is that something that is sustainable that we can continue? So that's why there's a different rate if a student is dual-enrolled in early childhood and BASE. And then we thought it was important to recognize the staff vacancies that we have, which is a workforce issue that we have, not just in Douglas County, it is throughout the state, throughout the nation in early childhood. So this is a number of our vacant positions that are currently, well, current as of November 1st. I did not look today. The number of vacancies that we have for preschool teachers, EA4s, EA1s, speech-language pathologists, and OTs. And then the vacancies that we have in BASE include their leads and their subs. So when we think about solutions, we have to think about our workforce availability as well. The funding has yet to be finalized, but this is an example of what a 40% of the BASE pupil rate would equate to. If your BASE pupil rate were $8,068.94, then that 40% rate would be $3,227.58 per pupil of revenue. So the statewide BASE pupil rate is currently at a minimum of 40%, but the final percentage of that has yet to be finalized or determined. Again, we're hoping Thursday, Monday. And that rate will vary by region, as it does currently for our regular K-12 per pupil ratio. If funding remains available, then this committee, the Department of Early Childhood, is also committed to looking at additional eligibility factors, including for our three-year-olds with IEPs, or four-year-olds with IEPs, and then three-year-olds who may meet those other qualifying criteria. The caveat to this is to recognize that only school districts or administrative units are eligible to apply for the waivers to serve those three-year-olds. So they are not eligible in other locations or settings to receive the funding for serving those particular ages of students. So the current three-year-old, four-year-old programs that we have in early childhood would remain in effect. So the enrollment process that we're anticipating will begin January. There is a Bridge Care is the vendor who is in charge of creating a universal application for the entire state of Colorado, that our local coordinating organization will be sort of the clearinghouse or the housing unit for that universal application. All families, all families of age-eligible students who want to participate in a preschool program with, through this process, must apply to that universal application process. Then the system will do a match. So families will be able to select up to 10 of their preference providers, and they will prioritize that list of those providers according to their first, second, third choice. They'll answer several questions embedded within the system. And then the system will generate a match between the family's priorities and those providers, and then send them a notification of the one provider that they've been matched with. Then the notice will go to the family, the notice will go to the provider to indicate you've been matched, and then we hope everybody swipes right. So then after that universal application process, the family then, once they're matched with a provider, will have to go to that provider location to actually register with that provider and adhere to all of the regulations that are required through that process. So here in Douglas County, in our early childhood education department, we do the online registration process, the OLR process. So families would still need to do that after they have completed that universal application process. Families will be able to select a geographic area. So for example, they could select their home address, they could select their, a grandparent's address, they could select a work-location address if they wanted to drop their child off at a location close to where they work. They can select whatever PIN or drop point that they want within the system. The system will then bring up all of the eligible providers that are in that area for them to make that selection and to start identifying their top 10 preferences. So because the program begins in the 2324 school year, we have already started with this process. As we know, registration and enrollment considerations begin far earlier than August. So in October, the LCO did submit to the state their community plan on behalf of the Douglas County community area. In November, and again, coming up on the 21st, will be another hearing from the Rules Committee regarding the funding, regarding the number of hours, regarding eligibility, those very critical, specific details to help further the planning. And then in January, the system will roll out its universal application process. It will start with a two-week window, opening on the 17th is what they're currently targeted to open, closing on the 31st for that first round of matches of enrollment. Then they'll open again February 1st for two weeks, close, and after that, then it will be on an ongoing basis. As families choose to enroll, it will be on a more rolling basis. And I will turn it back over to Danell.
So we had the opportunity to pull together a UPK task force for the district. And so we have many members of our team that are working around the implementation of UPK in Douglas County. So we have met two to three different times this year for half-day sessions. And really, a large part of our first meetings have been just learning and understanding all of the different complexities that are happening when it goes with UPK and early childhood education, because there are many complexities. And so we've had the opportunity to work with this group. At our last meeting, we identified collectively as a group what our goals are for year one, year two, and year three, although we still need to continue to refine those goals. I wanted to make sure, just to highlight, how this UPK task force addresses the needs of many areas of our organization. So everything from the building leadership roles and responsibilities to Director of Health Wellness and Prevention to BASE, we know that there will be nutrition services impacts and transportation impacts and so forth. And so we will continue to layer in additional members as this work continues to proceed forward. Early childhood education in DCSD has a vision and a focus. And one of the conversations our task force has engaged in is, this is also an opportunity to look at the implementation of UPK in a short-term view, but also early childhood in Douglas County School District in a long-term view. So this task force will be doing both, short-term work in goals and targets and monitoring, as well as what in three years from now will we want to be able to do to continue to refine and enhance our early childhood education programming in Douglas County School District. So these are some of the considerations we've engaged in moving forward. How do we address the capacity needs for preschool programming in schools in regions with increasing enrollment? We engaged in a very robust conversation recently with our Long Range Planning Committee. It was really a phenomenal conversation, great questions, feedback for us to consider. And that will absolutely be critical as we continue to proceed forward with, especially this first bullet. For the 2425 school year, how might we increase full-day preschool options? We have to be very careful that if we do increase options, we don't take away other obligations and options we have to serve and support our three-year-olds still. And so there are complexities. I think sometimes we hear, let's just do full-day preschool programming. And that's not as easy as it maybe sounds. There's a lot of variables that have to be considered with that. What will the cost be of adding full-day programs to our district? Right now, as we just mentioned, we are still waiting to get the information about the specific funding that we will receive. Where might we have capacity to increase full-day options without eliminating other essential programs? Like I said, our three-year-old programs, as well as other special education programs in our schools. And if we are able to increase our preschool programming and full-day options, will we be able to hire high-quality staff? The workforce shortage definitely is impacting early childhood educations and educators as well. So our recommendation up to this point has been, and we talked about this with LRPC, as well as our elementary principals last week, is in year one, not to significantly alter our preschool programming in the district. There are many variables right now that are unknown, and so we are able to absolutely accommodate the 10 hours of free preschool for our four-year-olds at very likely, but to be determined, no cost to our families. So that is something that we feel like is feasible within our current structure and our current model, because there are many variables that are unknown. We are very interested to see what our community interest will truly be, given the various different options that our community has. What will our student funding actually be? We don't know that at this point. Capacity needs continues to be a variable as we look at those schools that have the ability to support an increase in programs. Unfortunately, they're not in our areas where there's the need, and so we always have to kind of navigate through that. Staffing availability, there will be unification of other preschool programs in July of 2023, so this is ever-evolving at the state level. The risk factors and additional hours of care are still to be decided, and there are just many other unanswered questions. And so we recognize this is an incredible opportunity for our community and for our youngest learners. And so we really need some answers to be able to do this. youngest learners, and so we really need some answers to be able to do this and do it really well on behalf of our students. So, questions?
Okay, board, we've got about 10 minutes allotted for questions. I think I have two quick ones after this. Given all the information that's unknown with the future meetings, when do you think you would need or want to come back and deliver an update to the board? And I don't need an answer now, just think about it and get it to the superintendent. And then the second one is just a question around this ranking. People ranked top 10, and then a singular provider selected. Is that singular provider DCSD, or will the individuals know the actual school location, DCSD school location that they're being assigned to?
It's by license specifically. So every brick and mortar has an individual license, so families will select from community, charter, faith-based, they'll rank any of their top 10. So it will be identified by that license.
So specific school location, not just you've been assigned to DCSD, what does that mean to me, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Other director questions?
I think I have one.
Director Ray.
Director Meek.
Director Meek, then Director Ray.
Yeah, just one really. Thank you for the presentation. I'm really fascinated to see how all of this is going to roll out, and I know it's happening really, really quickly. The whole community interest and identifying what the community interest is, what's the plan to figure that out? Are we outreach-ing to the community, and what does that look like?
So our local coordinating organization, under our Director of Early Childhood Council, Diane Smith, they have the responsibility to determine the community plan for outreach. And in fact, they held many meetings a couple of weeks ago that we participated in, in order to get feedback from the community in regards to the elements of application, how this process impacts families, and so forth. So we're just one, but the LCO itself has the responsibility to do the community outreach in this regard.
So if I'm understanding correctly, we don't have the capacity to handle the number of students that could be eligible for this program, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. So there was never the intention for the school district itself to be the only provider for UPK. So we received the information from the state that their projection was anywhere between 24 to 2,700 students would be eligible in Douglas County, but that we didn't have, we don't have the full responsibility to provide that service and support, because we recognize, and the state recognized, that families should have the opportunity to choose based on the mixed delivery model.
So will it be, it seems like there are so many moving parts to this, and I'm trying to understand where the collisions might occur. For instance, when we enroll our preschoolers now, they choose their preferences, but it's typically on a space-available basis. Is that right, whether or not they get their preference?
Correct.
So if we're essentially incentivizing more students to take advantage of preschool, how does that impact then those that are already in our preschool program? Can they get bumped out because now we have new people that are wanting that same spot?
So that's one of the priorities, families, that's one of those embedded questions within the Bridge Care system of the universal application, that families will, I indicate, if they're currently already in that program, that it's a weighted response then from the system itself. So there are some of those factors built into the magical metrics that that system has, so that their intent is for continuity of care, for children to be in the same programs that they're currently already in. And our overall capacity between the early childhood education base and our charter partners is over 50% of those age-eligible students. So we're not 100% of them, but we're a good majority of half, more than half of all age-eligible students. So the rest comes from the rest of our community partners. And Diane and Gigi have called, personally called, all of the providers in the community to have these conversations with them directly and engage their partnership and engage their interest to join us. And that's why we're at about 2,700 right now, as far as those who have voiced an interest for opting in. Some who have been a bit reticent or not willing to fully opt in yet, it's because they're still waiting for some of this information before they commit to fully opting in. But we do anticipate within the community that Douglas County will be able to serve all age-eligible students of families who choose to want to do that. Now, in the specific one that they want, we'll have to wait and see where that all falls out.
Very good. And we already give tuition relief to some populations, is that correct? That we already, with students that are on IEPs or students, in terms of a sliding scale for income, do we already provide some income relief or some tuition relief?
So currently, yes. Currently, students who have an IEP pay no tuition. Students who are eligible under the Colorado preschool program pay no tuition. That funding comes directly from the state as far as that tuition reimbursement component. This current year, we have a grant, so we're waiving the registration fee for all families, the $100 registration fee. We're also providing some tuition relief for any current families of four-year-olds by about $45 for a two-day-a-week or $90 a month for a four-day-a-week participation. So we're currently providing some of that tuition relief this year to help incentivize families to want to come back to preschool. It's been a rough go post-COVID to bring them back. We've also noticed that some of our community partners had to go out of business during COVID, so we're trying to rebuild that community back in bringing those community partners back in to be able to serve our littles.
One last question for me, is we currently pay our preschool teachers a classified wage. We don't, in my opinion, respect their credentials. And when I see that we're continuing then to expand a program to where we may even have more students that have more needs, and we continue to pay our preschool teachers a classified wage, to me is unacceptable. And so I'm wondering, are we talking at all about looking at that preschool teacher and their compensation path? Because I think that's been a concern for many, many years.
I can take that. That is absolutely something that we keep an eye on, but we have to see, this first year is really a wait-and-see. Let's see how this plays out so that we know what we need to do moving forward. It depends. It depends on how the funding actually turns out, because of course, if we were to switch our model in terms of how we pay our preschool staff, that would have to be able to come from preschool funding. So we have to wait and see how that funding model actually looks from the state. And you mentioned there are a lot of moving pieces, and they are moving really, really big, really significant pieces even right now. So we have to let all those pieces settle and use this next year to really evaluate where we are, what the role of our community providers are versus what the role the district is, what our demand looks like versus the demand of our community providers, so that as we look at the following school year, we can start to figure out what adjustments we need to make, not only to capacity, but also in terms of competitive pay and all of those other things as well. I really appreciate the question, especially about our amazing preschool teachers.
Can I just follow up with what you said, Superintendent Kane? So we can only pay from our preschool funding? The district's not able to kick in additional funding to that program? It has to be exclusive to what we collect for preschool funding?
Well, at the moment, whatever the state is providing, so the state will provide extra funding for preschool, and then we would have to provide extra staff, right? Let's just keep it simple.
Right. And I don't mean what, I don't mean the universal program, but I mean just our own preschool teachers right now.
Preschooling in general. Oh, no, not for preschooling and preschool in general, my apologies. We have to see how the state funding works out with the 10 hours and what that ends up looking like in order to evaluate where we are financially. But in terms of looking at competitive pay for preschool teachers, we are in the same situation that we are in every other job classification in our district, which is that we have to figure out how to get through an over-the-hump here so we can look at potentially 5A in the future, because we're not competitive anywhere, as you're aware.
So we do have the ability, as a district, to pay our preschool teachers, our existing preschool teachers, more competitively if we decide to prioritize our budget. We don't rely on preschool tuition to be the driving factor for how much we pay a preschool teacher. We can also, we can say, we could say as a district, we're only going to have certified teachers in our preschool.
Of course. Keeping in mind that like anything else, then we have to figure out who that money comes from.
Thanks.
Okay, that includes our time, unless there's any other questions by other directors. Okay, thank you both. That moves us to item number 25, Approval of Board of Education Legislative Priorities. And Mr. Blair, if you could bring up the attachment for that, we would appreciate it. We've allotted 20 minutes for discussion, and this is something, as a reminder, we talked about this at the last meeting at Cantrell. Hopefully, I endeavor to consolidate and capture changes and things, but what we'll do is just allow individual directors to ask comments or express concerns, and then depending on the number and level of concerns, we'll entertain motions to either do a quick markup and a group approval, or we'll look at things one by one, depending on the nature of the issue. So at this point, I'll just open it up to discussions and comments by individual directors before we entertain any motions. Director Weineger.
Thank you for condensing it to much less pages. It feels more like priorities now. And actually, one of them, I was wondering if we even needed, just to condense it more, but it's on page, what is this, five?
Sorry, if you can give us the general end that it's under in the letter, that would be great.
Yep, page five, under Financial Well-being. And what we were just talking about, Universal P K, letter E.
Okay, keep going down, Mr. Blair. It's after, keep going down. We're almost there. There we go.
Oh, I guess it's page eight on here.
And I wonder if that is...
Oh, no, it's on page five. So this is a list of just what our financial well-being...
Oh, I'm sorry. You went all the, I'm sorry, you went all the way down to our ends. It's actually under Financial Well-being, up in the main body of the document. So I'm sorry, I steered you wrong. I was just looking at the title. So probably about page five. Thank you. That Financial Well-being E. Hey, go ahead, Director Weineger.
Well, I was just on letter E, so just scroll down a little more. It talks about funding full-day kindergarten and pre-K, which I'm not against, but I'm wondering if we necessarily need it on there, since that's been decided at a legislative level already, and I think this was more before it was decided. Just anyone's thoughts on that?
Yeah, I can provide a quick comment on that. Of course, we want this to remain funded. We've seen various things initiated by the legislature, and then I think the key word in there is adequate funding in the future, as things shake out, and they grow, and the sustainability piece. And from indicating a legislative priority, we want to make sure that now that this has been voted on by the voters and set in motion, it is absolutely continued to be, and it doesn't become basically an underfunded or unfunded mandate in the future. That was my reason for having it in there. Other director comments on item E here, Universal PK?
That makes sense to me, thank you. I'm fine with keeping it for that reason. And then another letter, same page, scroll up a bit on C. This one is about ensuring our public dollars go to pre-K and grade 12. And then the second sentence, where we oppose efforts such as utilization of vouchers, education saving accounts, all that. So I am not saying I want to put vouchers in Douglas County. All our schools aren't failing our kids at all. I just am wondering if I necessarily think we need to put something in there saying we oppose it at a state level, in case there are school districts out there that could benefit from vouchers. I don't want to put something in there saying that we promote vouchers. I just more so, my feeling on it is to stay neutral. But that's just me, I was just wondering how other directors felt on that.
Yeah, and I can talk quickly to the change. This was something that was in the previous version. I only went in and added the words DCSD throughout, so that we were not dictating to other school districts. I mean, this is about DCSD's legislative priorities, and really saying that, you know, at least as one director, based on my perception of the utility of vouchers, they're really good when you have failing schools and you have a lack of choice, which I don't believe either one applies to DCSD. So, but I did not want to universally speak for other districts. Thus, the only changes from last year were just putting in DCSD, that DCSD funding goes to DCSD schools. And we're making sure, you know, that we talk about within Douglas County, so we're not dictating to other districts what their priorities may be. Other director comments on that? Director Ray?
No, I was just, I would concur, and I appreciate, Director Weineger, you wondering about the other districts, but these are priorities for us. This is for Douglas County. This reflects our values, our priorities, and I think clearly Director Peterson said it well, we do not have failing schools. There's really no need for a voucher program in our district for that reason. So I think, I feel strongly that it needs to stay there. It needs to be said, just as it has is said. The only thing I'm wondering, and I understand now, Director Peterson, your rationale between, about the adding within Douglas County? I actually questioned that, because I thought, well, it seems like we're saying we only oppose vouchers that are used within Douglas County, but you could use a voucher to go outside of Douglas County? So I just kind of, I just kind of Xed that off, because I just figured it didn't need to be there, but...
Yeah, now that you explain that interpretation, I'm happy to, and I'll try to keep track of all of these, under page five, under C. We could certainly strike within Douglas County, just so it's not misinterpreted, but I think you understand the intent.
Yes, I do, indeed.
Thank you. So if we're keeping track of potential motions, we're so far talking about striking within, the words within Douglas County at the end of C, under Financial Well-being. Director Meek?
Yeah, sticking with that one. But first, I want to thank you for doing all the work of pulling this together and listing the red line document, because it's just much easier for me to follow changes that way. Honestly, I don't think we are going to be able to complete this task within the time that we have allotted, because there are significant changes throughout. I don't think we're going to have time to go through them all. I wonder if perhaps we think about dedicating a work session time to actually spend time working through these, as opposed to rushing it through. And I'll use this one we're talking about as an example. I don't want to pass something that maybe we shouldn't. So when you read this, it says, "DCSD supports ensuring that public tax dollars for PK-12 education are used exclusively to fund DCSD PK public schools, including DCSD authorized charter schools." By adding DCSD, the way I read this now, it's saying that public tax dollars for PK-12 education are exclusively for Douglas County schools. But public tax dollars are state dollars as well as local dollars. And so you could read this saying that all public tax dollars should be going to Douglas County schools. And I don't think that's what the intent is for this, but it's confusing in that regard. And if you're trying to say all local public tax dollars for PK-12 education are used exclusively to fund our schools, well, that's what, I mean, that's how the state funding works. So I'm just not sure what you're trying to do by adding DCSD here, and I just worry that if we try to rush through these changes, we might be putting things in place that we're not going to have time to talk through, because there's changes in almost every single one.
Yeah, I understand your concern. We did talk about it for, I think it was an hour and 15 minutes at the last one. So if there are particular ones, I think we can talk about it. How many more? Do you have other sections that...
Yeah, a lot, actually. So do you want me to continue with other concerns? Or should we resolve C first?
Let's maybe table C just for a second, and maybe we go through other directors. And if other directors just have a onesie, twosie, or whatever, then we'll look at how many you have and things like that. So I'll open it up to other directors before coming back to item C.
I have another one too, but I don't, I'm glad for other directors to go before me, since I've already...
Yeah, maybe we'll just go down the line, if you don't mind, Director Hanson, if you had...
I have another one too, but I don't, I'm glad for other directors to go before me, since I've already...
Yeah, maybe we'll just go down the line, if you don't mind, Director Hanson, if you had...
Sure. I think it's important to frame this conversation. I know we spoke about it previously, but different people watch different meetings, and there are some pretty important topics that are included in this. I think just to tee this up, it would be really helpful if you could explain exactly what this document is, exactly who it goes to, and what it is used for, before we even continue this conversation. I do not want anyone watching to confuse our discussion with implementing DCSD policy, and think it's really important, given some of the things that are included in the topics, to clarify.
Yeah, excellent. Mr. Blair, if you can just go up to the very first paragraph of the document, at the very top, page one. And we did discuss this at the last meeting, but it's worth reiterating. The statement is right there in the very first paragraph. These are priorities that we, the board, are putting out, that we are going to send to our local legislators. So as they are looking at government, or they're looking at policy and things that could affect us, they know what the intent of the school board and the district is in terms of what we believe would be favorable and things we would support, and conversely, things that we believe would be deleterious, or things we would not support as a district. And it's really just to guide them. That second part, honoring Colorado's local governance, is, it's stated, you know, in our Colorado Constitution, under Article 9, local control in education is clearly what the Constitution anticipates. And this is one way for us to commute through, communicate through this document to legislators and lawmakers, what we believe would be in the best interest of the district. So to Director Hanson's comment, this is not a change to any of our existing school policies. This is not us directing the operations of the district. This is just us providing guidance to legislators, that if these things should come up, this is where this board and this district stands relative to those matters. So thank you. Does that answer your...
Yeah, I think that that's just really important, that our community knows these are not DCSD policies. This is really just requests and recommendations for consideration to other elected officials. I have four or five, and I can start with, maybe I'll start with easier, because I know there are going to be some that are going to be harder discussions. Let's maybe knock some of these out and see where we are timing-wise. So probably one of the most important to me personally is under the safe positive culture and climate.
Page three, Mr. Blair.
Point C.
And keep going down to item C. There we go. Thank you.
So this is in regards to who can carry a firearm and on school grounds. We had previously used the word exclusively in the language of this, because there are some districts who have provided an opportunity for employees to serve a dual purpose, to serve as a teacher and to serve as a security officer. I do not feel like that is necessary in our school district. And by using the word exclusively in this language, I think we are providing some security, security's the wrong word, a sense of security to our community, that this is, this is not a backdoor effort to arm teachers. We are saying that it is important to us as a school district, that anyone who is carrying a firearm on DCSD property is exclusively employed as a security officer. That is their one and only responsibility. And then those individuals meet the training that we have established as a district that is required to be a part of that. So it's really important to me to add that word exclusively back in, just because there's a lot of history within that discussion that I think is really important.
Yeah, my thought for pulling that out was just to say, if we have, for instance, one of our SSO, School Security Officers, and in their job description is things that are in addition to security, even though they are a security officer, that that wouldn't be disqualifying.
I think the risk of a gray area with what a security officer's designated responsibility is, is significantly less than, if we're trying to balance the skills of the language we use, the message we send to our community by excluding the word exclusively is, it's a, I think it's a problem for, it is a problem for me, and I think it will be a problem for our community. And I see the problem of having security officer, the SSO's job, the job duties overlapping or be confusing somehow, is a far less significant possibility compared to the risk of our community saying, what's happening?
Yeah, in any case, it was intended to say, if your description is not security officer, obviously you would not meet this. Again, we're not, we're not writing policy here. We're talking about legislative prohibition, and I think the big one here is, you know, the continued, if you will, prohibition of individuals possessing firearms, dangerous weapons, ammunition. This is not, you know, we continue, obviously, to support that. We don't want people that are not security personnel employed by the district, or SRO partners in law enforcement, sheriff's office, et cetera, that are assigned to our schools, or responding, obviously, to be able to come on campus. But I wouldn't be opposed to putting exclusively back in.
I would really, it would mean a lot to me.
Okay, other, keep, you can keep going.
Another one that I hope will be easy. You know, this is just, more than anything, I think, a point of clarification that I need. On the outstanding educators and staff, let's see if I can find where we talk about it. There's actual, there's actually multiple references to alternative pathways to teacher licensure. And this is entirely on me. When we have these discussions, I generally feel like I've spoken with teachers, I've spoken with the stakeholders that are involved, and I know their general feelings. This is something that I haven't had these conversations, and I just don't know. I completely recognize that we are at, we're an unprecedented, we need to fix.
I'm just trying to tell, Mr. Blair, we're up on page three. You're down to the ends again. Thank you.
I know we have staff shortages. I know we need to think outside the box for ways to meet our staffing needs. The one thing I want to make sure that we're cautious of, as we are moving forward as a district, is that we're not being, we're not disregarding the people who were a part of our district, who have chosen a traditional path to teaching. And like I said, I just haven't had conversations with teachers to see, what does that feel like, to know that there may be this alternative pathway, when you invested the money in your bachelor's degree, when you incurred the debt? My only, my only experience that I can compare it with is, when I was taking the bar exam to become an attorney, I had to take it in every state I wanted to be licensed in. And then two years later, they came out and said, oh, no, we're going to offer reciprocity between all of these states. You just have to file a form and you're licensed. That felt really bad, that I had just gone through a very different process than was now available, understand the reasoning behind it, but it didn't feel good. And I want to make sure, as a district, we're not doing anything that doesn't feel good to the people who are currently a part of our staff. That may not be something that needs to be included in legislative priorities, maybe something more, just hear my heart and know where I'm, how we need to protect the people that we currently have on our staff, more than anything. But I just needed to say it before I could support this.
Superintendent Kane, I believe you have a comment on that?
I just wanted to make sure to offer a clarification, that right now, alternative licensure pathways, whoever goes through an alternative licensure pathway does have to have a bachelor's degree. So they would have also invested in a bachelor's degree, just as a, just as an aside. But what I have heard teachers and people express about alternative paths, we certainly, as you said, have to have alternative paths to address the teacher shortage while maintaining that high level of rigor and quality, to make sure that we're always putting high-quality teachers in front of our kids. So I don't know if that helps you, Director Hanson, at all, if that clarification helps, but that's just a clarification.
Do you want me to keep going?
Was there a recommendation for language change?
Not necessarily. I needed to understand what that looked like, and I think I just needed, I need to know more than anything that our DCSD staff, if there are alternative pathways that are provided from any legislative bodies, that our DCSD staff will do everything within their power to make sure that our, our traditional path employees will still feel valued. And that isn't necessarily something that comes from legislative priorities.
Yeah, just a quick comment, the clause in there, while maintaining rigorous standards, was an attempt to assuage the concern that this is in no way a lowering of the bar. This is just different ways to achieve the level of excellence that we expect among our staff.
Yeah.
I apologize, Ms. Thompson just texted me a really fantastic point. When we talk about those alternative pathways, part of that is for our existing teachers to be able to receive endorsements and things that will allow them to grow in their career without making it super hard. So it also benefits, thinking about alternative pathways is more than just someone who's not teaching. It also benefits existing teachers, making it easier to go from an elementary ed teacher to a learning specialist, for example, or an additional endorsement, that kind of thing. Thank you, I will stop. Thank you very much.
And getting ahead of ourselves, I'd love to see things for maybe our EAs that work with special needs, work with the district to get licensure, additional qualifications that maybe we could provide. Again, just thinking out of the box, things like that.
Okay, let's jump off the cliff. In the collaborative parent, family, and community relations, point A. I was going to let somebody else do this. I really wasn't planning on, I didn't have my thoughts written out. So this is going to be off the cuff. Let me see what I can explain here. First of all, we are writing legislative priorities. There is almost no way to have conversations about politics when we are requesting our politicians to consider different topics. That is really hard. Sitting here in this seat sometimes just feels like whiplash. The district's going this direction, the district's going this direction. And what public commenters sometimes perceive, it just, it feels, it feels exhausting sometimes of how many times we've said one thing and it's interpreted as another, and it is really hard to talk about politics while we are supposed to be taking politics out. That said, point A, as it is written, feels very political to me. And I understand that parent rights are absolutely something that is a hot topic right now. And I absolutely understand that there were things that have happened that led people to a place where they feel like this is possibly something that is necessary. And I also feel on the opposite side of that, that there's a lot of national movement in this conversation, and I don't know that it necessarily reflects our community. With regards to the way that this is written, I just, for every action, there's an equal and opposite reaction. And when we talk about parent rights, I think it is really important to consider and factor in what that does to the other parts of our equation that need to stay in balance. And when I think of the equation that we've talked about so many times, when we start talking about parent rights, I really, well, I worry and I know that it doesn't feel good to a lot of teachers, when you have to talk about parents' rights, and these are our children, and this narrative that has become a part of so many conversations. I just want people to stop and think, what does that feel like to our teachers? Director Williams and I were just talking over, over the last break, we're watching some of our kids' grades come in. There are hundreds of employees that are sitting out there right now, tonight, at 8:00 o'clock at night, will be long into the evening, grading our kids' papers. They are pouring their hearts into our kids' educations. They don't want to be a parent. They don't want to cross over in any boundary that would, that should feel uncomfortable to parents. And I just don't like this narrative of we need a parent right, or a parent bill of rights, and everything in this point feels very much like we support a parent bill of rights. It puts the equation out of balance. Our teachers need to have an equal piece of that respect and an equal piece of that priority, so that everything stays in balance. And this very much concerns me, that it feels out of balance.
Yeah, and it was actually my intent to do the exact opposite by putting in the phrase there, supports legislation that respects and supports parents' values and beliefs. But the key one here is, while strengthening, strengthening the mutually respectful partnership between parents and educators to support the academic growth and achievement. It really was, hey, sure, this is a trend, support parents' rights. However, this is not a parent versus teacher, which team are you on? That's a false paradigm. We support, you know, the intent was to say, we support legislation that does support parents while strengthening the mutually respectful partnership with parents and educators, so that that equation didn't get out of balance. Or at least that was my intent in the first part, to say that. But I also, and this is as one director, believe that we need to recognize that those are, those are different. You know, that those are parts of that triangle that we've talked about, the student, the parent, and the educator, but they're different, right? They're different roles. But it has to be a partnership to make it work for the student. And that's, that's the part I was kind of trying to stress in here, that if we're going to support, quote, parents' rights, it must be to strengthen that partnership with the teacher and put those back into balance. So I, maybe I didn't craft it correctly, but that was the intent. Director Ray, and by the way, before you go, we are at the, we are just over. So if we, let's maybe take a pause here, and if we think, just based on the number, Director Hanson's still going through hers, and before we get down here, I thought that the last board meeting would preempt a lot of this. Obviously, I misestimated. So if we want, we can, I'll take Director Ray's point on this topic, but if we want to put on a separate session without a vote or something, just to work these out, we can get that scheduled and just, we will still need to come back out to the, you know, to the public and have a vote on accepting whatever the final item is. But we don't have to run into the wee hours of the night if we think it's just better to have directors go away, sit on this, read it for a while, sit on it for a period of time, and then come back. Again, we can't have offline meetings and stuff, but if there are particular areas that you think need attention, we can do that. With that, go ahead, Director Ray, to follow up on that.
Well, I don't forget your question and answer, Director Peterson. I don't mind spending more time on this, if that's the question you're asking, because I don't know that I have a lot more things to bring up. But I did want to respond to Director Hanson's concern around balance, and I think it would, and I haven't had time to really draft what that might look like, but after this, is to give some kind of a statement that also says that we respect the professional career of an educator. You know, we've made a point to say, we recognize and respect the parents' rights to do these things. We also ought to have a statement to say, we also respect the educator's profession in terms of determining best practices for instruction, or, you know, something along those lines. I know in my former schools, we would talk about that the parent brings the perspective of the child, the teacher or the school personnel brings the perspective of a student. And it doesn't mean that they compete, it just means that we honor the fact that we have two very contrasting perspectives that are very beneficial to the welfare of the child. But I think that might help what Director Hanson's is, if we could just add another statement that says, we respect, this is what we respect about the profession of being an educator, and that that's equally as valued in terms of these priorities as the role of a parent. So, and I'm sorry, I don't have a draft of a statement, but did you have, are we, do we want to continue on, or...
Let me just take a broad survey of the board, you know, not a formal vote. You know, we could either move through and get some more of this ticked off, or we can, you know, checked off as we move through, or if we just think it's too much to bite off tonight in this time, I'd be happy just to table this item, and then we would, I would ask that individual directors would have to contact me. Do we add this to a working session on our retreat? I think we have a lot of other stuff to go through there, mainly policy governance and some things around monitoring, and certainly the review of 5A and 5B and some brainstorming there. So that may not be appropriate, but we don't want to sit on this. We want to get these priorities out to legislators. So just any directors that have comments on that, whether they want to continue through tonight, or we can get a separate, now, I'd want to honor everyone's Thanksgiving break and don't want to schedule anything during then, but if we would need to schedule a separate working session just for this item, we could do that. Director Williams?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, that there's... Yeah, I mean, it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, that there's a lot of other things that we probably need to work through, so I would be in favor of scheduling another time for us all to meet, because I think that these things are important. And I do think that as much as possible, finding consensus would be the best step forward.
Other, other directors? Director Ray?
I have one that, for the sake of some of our students, I would love just to express right now, if I could. We have a student and students that are part of the Colorado Youth Advisory Council Committee, and we have a student right now who is actually seeing her proposal work through as a bill right now. And she's pretty jazzed about it, and has been really asking for our support even, you know, prior to this, this year. She's supporting some legislative efforts around looking at the disproportionate disciplinary practices of districts, to really say, when we start breaking down and looking at those categories of students, that there is some really blatant disproportion in terms of some students being disciplined more than other students. And so her bill right now, that is progressing, is addressing that. And I know she asked me last night, she's also on Student Advisory Group, and she asked me last night if, if we, in our legislative priorities, could reflect that, because I'll just give her more support in advocating for that. I have a copy of the bill in its current form, willing to forward that on to you. I know Director Meek has, has spoken with that student as well, but I'd sure love for us for, again, because it's a student voice that we can actually reflect and support, and have that reflected in this document under safe, positive culture and climate. And it would just simply just say, Douglas County School of Education supports legislative efforts to address disproportionate discipline practices in our schools. That would be the, the simple statement that I would propose.
Okay, thank you, Director Ray. What I'm kinda getting a sense of is, maybe we should table this, and I will get a separate meeting on, and then I will encourage, as individual directors, if you have something like Director Ray just spoke up, having read the draft that you believe should be included, just individually, send it to me, I will include it in the updated working draft, and then we'll get something on the schedule, so.
Is it, can we give her some feedback tonight, though? Is it, is it possible to just give her some reaction to that, or would you rather spend more time looking at the actual bill? I just know, I know she's in the, she's in the heat of the moment.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna read the full legislation, because as we know with legislation, you might go, yep, 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 what is that, right? So I think I would want her, as one director, read the associated legislation.
Fair enough.
So, okay. And so without objection, we can move forward on this, and I will get something on a future agenda. Last ask of the directors on this matter is I will ask our Assistant Board Secretary, Renee Brockman, to reach out, given the holiday period, but we do not want to string this out, we wanna get these priorities out. She'll be asking for your availability, if you can just please be responsive and give her multiple options, so we can get something on. With that, we will move to item number 26, which is the Board of Education Reports. 26 is the President Report, the Board of Education Regular Meeting.
President Peterson.
I'm sorry.
Do we have to vote to table that item?
That's a good question.
It won't hurt, I guess.
Okay, then, then I believe to table it is a two-thirds Roberts rules. If somebody can give me a backup on that, to actually table that item, I know to call the question. Well, let's just see where the vote is, and then we'll go from that, I have a feeling. So I believe the, are you making a motion, Director Weineger, to table the item to a later date?
Just for clarification, so table means indefinitely. Delay is the term I think you want to, to use. So delay, what's that?
Postpone.
Or postpone.
Postpone action item on item number 25 from tonight's agenda to a later date. Is that appropriate, friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Motion made to postpone action on item number 25 to a later date, made by Weineger.
Second.
Second by Meek. Hanson?
Aye.
Meek?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Peterson, aye. Ray?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Weineger?
Aye.
And we don't have to worry about the Roberts threshold, but I will look it up after this. Okay, thank you for the, for the backup, and we will now move to item number 26, President Report. Board of Education Regular Meeting is scheduled for 13 December. We have the 21 to 25 November Thanksgiving holiday period, and that will be planned since there will only be one meeting in December due to the holiday period that follows. That'll be planned for a full regular board meeting with public comment, action items, and everything, and we hope to continue with taking up our ends as a board, and this will be end number four, Collaborative Parent-Family and Community Relations. Agenda planning for the 13 December meeting will occur on Thursday, 17 November, 10:30. I would also like to include agenda planning for the 30 November Board Retreat this Thursday, the 17th, as well. I am working with Mr. Matt Cook from Casby to come up with a draft agenda for that retreat. So if you have comments on that, I will try to get that out to our board members prior to agenda planning this Thursday for your comment. And that brings us to the next item, the Board of Education Fall Retreat will occur on Wednesday, 30 November in Colorado Springs, in conjunction with the Casby Colorado Association of School Board Conference, which will occur also in the Springs from December 1st through December 3rd. That is it for my items. Director Williams, Vice President items.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna go through the last couple weeks, I guess. So first, LRPC, we had the great privilege of listening to the preschool, the UPK presentation from Deputy Superintendent Hyatt and team, and we had a lot of really great conversation around that. I'm always impressed by LRPC and all of their questions and, and just their in-depth concern, and, I don't know. I, I just think they're amazing. So anyway, that's, that was LRPC. The other thing that, from the Community Engagement Plan that Director Meek had brought forth to the board, I started rolling that out with LRPC this last meeting, so what I did was just introduce the, the plan, and actually just started with our first question. So I guess my hope to everyone here would be that in, in all of your committees that you're a part of, if you can try to get on the agenda for, you know, 15 minutes every time, I think the plan is to kinda just do one question at a time, it's just too much to try to take up an entire hour of the committee's time. But if you can even just fit in 15 minutes of director time to kinda introduce it, and then just hit one question each time, I think we could get, get the feedback and be able to start making strides there. So that's LRPC. Director Weineger and I had the great privilege of going to United Airlines on Friday with, oh, the training facility, yes, well, it was at, near the old Stapleton Airport. And Andy Jones facilitated that with Dr. Rex Korr and Jeremy, I don't remember his last name, and I feel really bad about that, but he was there as well, and he's going to be doing the aviation curriculum at, at the Legacy Campus. And it was a very, very fun and cool tour that we got to take, seeing simulators and all that sort of stuff. And what a great opportunity our kids are gonna be able to have by, you know, having, having this aviation program through the Legacy Campus, and I'm very excited for that. United Airlines donated a very cool statue that was then hauled away and brought to the Legacy Campus, hopefully be set up soon.
Lended.
Oh, I'm sorry. They, it was, it was a long-term lend, lending that they, that they've done with us. So anyway, I'm very excited about that, and hopefully we can get pictures of that up as soon as it's put back together.
Describe what it is, it's a little kid.
Yes, it's like, it's like a kid, a bronze statue, getting ready to like throw the, it's called, what was it called, Wings?
Yeah, I may be able to get it up there.
Very cool, anyway. I think it, I think it was called Wings, but it's like a child getting ready to throw, and I, it kind of symbolizes like being able to take off, and so I thought, I thought it was pretty neat that they were putting that on lend to, to the district. So while Superintendent Kane tries to find that, I'm gonna, I will just address CPAN that I, that I attended this weekend along with a couple other directors. All, all seven of us were invited, along with many, many boards across the front range, and I thought, what a great opportunity then to go listen to Dr. Alvita King, be able, you know, to speak as the keynote speaker, who happens to be the niece of Martin Luther King. And I found it a privilege to be able to be there and listen to her and her perspective. I took away from CPAN very different than, than what was brought forth at public comment. I, I took away focusing on academic excellence and, and creating partnerships with, with educators in the district, and that's, that's, that's what I took. Was there other conversations? Yes, but I think that this was also very broad, it wasn't specifically to Douglas County. So there was talk about, you know, taking away valedictorian, which Douglas County has not done, so it does not, you know, it's, it's not about this district, but I think they were, they were speaking as a whole to all districts across the front range. So, anyway, that's what I, I took from it, and that's all I have tonight.
Okay, I think we'll start down this end with Director Meek for other staff and liaison reports.
Yeah, I think the only update I would add, last Friday, Director Myers and I, and Superintendent Kane, we were at the Cimarron Middle School Veterans Day Ceremony. If you ever have an opportunity to attend that, it is absolutely amazing. And I was able to talk to many of our veterans that attended, and our staff, our students who write poems and papers and present. It was truly, truly inspirational. My only regret is I did not bring my, my father-in-law, who's a retired Marine, because he would have absolutely loved that event. It was phenomenal. And the picture's up on the screen, for anyone that wants to see the statue. Inspired really is the word, and I just love their, it, it made my month. It's just amazing to see what our students are capable of and the connection to our community. And our community being able to come into our schools and feel honored and valued, so it was just phenomenal. And since I brought it up earlier, my only reason for wanting us as a board to talk about the CPAN event is because I do feel like it has led to divisive comments, and, you know, I, I do think we as a board need to find a time to talk about, how do we move forward in a way, in an environment that is politically charged? And I think Superintendent Kane called it's, you know, the event was politically charged. So how do we as leaders lead our community in a way where we're not losing traction and we're moving ahead? And we have members of our community that feel deeply wounded by many of the comments that were made at that event. And to ignore that, I don't think it's okay. And that was my intent for bringing it up. It's not to cause division among us, it's to just acknowledge the reality of what is out there, and try to figure out how we as leaders stand up to make sure each and every one of our students are feeling valued and safe and included in our schools. So with that, I will turn it to the next person.
Director Weineger?
Just thank you to United Airlines for the statue.
And Mr. Blair, is that up so that the audience at home can see?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's not the best.
Yeah.
It's an outline.
It's a boy in overalls.
Yeah, boy in overalls, it's cute. Yeah, but that was a great experience. I mean, United Airlines was amazing. All the employees we ran into there was super nice and super excited for this partnership for our CTE program. Oh, and we got some old chairs from an airplane as well, and spoke about ideas of also having a flight attendant program. And it was a bunch of brainstorming, it was, it was great, and thank you to United Airlines. And I believe we're also partnering with Metro State University with that program, so thank you to them as well.
Director Myers?
So I already talked about my visits the day after Election Day. I went Prairie Crossing, Timber Trail, Cherokee, Cherokee Trail, and Sierra Middle School, great visit. And also attended on Friday the Veterans Day at Cimarron. And actually, I kinda had the same thoughts when I left. My goodness, I wish I had taken my three grandchildren to see something like this. And I saw old faces and some principals I knew, teachers that I had worked with. And I also attended the North Star Academy Celebration for Veterans, another unique and very beautiful celebration for our veterans. And each branch of the military that was represented, they had the most darling, were the kindergarten kids in uniform, and coming in, they sang each military song. So we actually had a gentleman behind us that had served in two military units. Yeah, so I was, I was quite impressed, services, thank you. Gosh, then that Friday afternoon, I, my, we, I took a tour of the Legacy Campus, my husband went along, I had a friend that had come, and we had quite a crowd, we had like 14, I believe. So I kinda pulled some strings and asked if I could bump in a couple of extra people, very impressive. And my husband was very impressed, especially with Dr. Rex Korr, with his presentation, the facility, and what's happening, and just the excitement that's going around with it. And then my last thing, my-
And why is that important? Because your husband is-
What?
In construction.
Oh, well, he was a director of construction, so he was, and he was quite, I'm not, said Dr. Rex Korr, who's not, we'll acknowledge, he's not in construction, did a very fine job, and I actually, he was one of the ones that I had to turn to when we voted to purchase this building, because it's a no-brainer. He told me, you cannot build, you cannot build a facility for the amount of money that we spent on this beautiful facility. And then Monday morning, I was in a DCYI retreat where I got to see our honorable Dr. Crawford in action, and the stuff that she does for this community, and what DCYI does for our community, and can step in. And one of the things that I took away is they can step in and work with the schools, work with these kids, and they can probably say and do things a little bit differently than what a school can, and come along and support, so that these kids are successful. Otherwise, I think that's it.
Director Ray?
Director Myers cut herself short, because she was also with me at the Student Advisory Group meeting Monday night. I don't know how you do that.
How do they?
But I will say, in addition to the things you heard from Nick tonight, I kinda led the group in a debrief around 5A and 5B also, and our kids are just tremendously insightful. And I think what both Director Myers and I came to the realization is that we missed, we missed that piece of really looking at how we engage our students with this, because we had, matter of fact, we had a student, I had a student come up to me and said it for his senior project, he really wanted to take on the whole way to communicate to other students and to come up with an engagement plan for when we have these kinda issues, like a bond and an MLO, so that students really have some voice. They're also amazing in terms of just, they know in their facility the areas that need to be improved. And I, it was really interesting to hear some of our students say, you know, the reason I didn't support the bond is because you said on your bond plan that you were gonna replace the tracks. We don't need new tracks, I need new ceiling tiles where the roof continues to leak every time we get a, you know, a big rain. And so it really made me realize that we probably missed a step there in terms of really getting our students engaged and, and to listen to them, because there's, they know well what needs to be improved in their facility. But, but I thought they had some remarkable insights, they're very similar to what we have heard from our community in terms of why or why not, and again, just, just very insightful in terms of what needs to, what needs to happen to get us even, even closer. So a great, a great group to work with. Couple of things that I will just encourage us, one is, I've said this before, but we desperately need to get back to reviewing our policies and updating them. The previous board literally updated, I think, over 100 policies during our term. And we got through section up to section I in our policy manual. But we, as, and I think Superintendent Kane communicated that we have a policy that's, that's definitely outdated. Well, that's just one of many. We have policies that, that shouldn't continue to be in our policy book as well as policies that are not in our policy book. Our Student Advisory Group found a couple that they discovered that wasn't included in our policy manual. And so I, I'm kind of intrigued that they're going to probably come to us and say, you guys need to put this in the, you know, this, this post-secondary policy needs to be in, in your board policy. So I would just encourage, we have a big, two big sections. The section that has policies that relate to instruction and curriculum, and then the section that relates to policies in terms of students. And I would just really say it's time for us to get back to the business of what we're supposed to be doing as a board, and that's really governing through policy. And we desperately need to get going on those. So I would just make a plea for us to really give that some attention. The other thing I will just bring up, I almost called a point of order earlier, but I felt like I wanted to do it more in a calm manner. But I think we need to honor Roberts rules when someone has the floor. And, you know, Director Meek, on a couple of occasions, has been interrupted. There, there are reasons to interrupt a speaker, but it's not foregoing off topic. And, and I really think that unfortunately, Director Meek was trying to use her conversation to build the rationale for what we can do better with being able to pass 5A and 5B. So I really would just ask us all to really review Roberts rules and realize that when a speaker has a floor, unless there's some really severe things, which is like you're using profane language or you're shouting insults, there really isn't a reason, according to Roberts rules, that you interrupt a speaker when they have the floor. So I just, in terms of helping us finesse our ability to work together, I would just ask that we, we pay attention to that. And with that, I think that's all I have. The only, the only other thing, and I, this one is a difficult one, but we're about to go into executive session or vote to go into executive session. And, you know, and then the topics are published in terms of, we've got this open meetings lawsuit as well as former Superintendent Wise's potential of a lawsuit. And I just, I just need to say, let's close that out now. I'm just, I think that has gone on for way too long. The cost now is getting close to $100,000 for, for stringing that out. And I just would plead with us, before we go into executive session, and to publicly make it known that I'm tired of that. And I think we can put, bring it to an end as soon as possible. So I'm just want to motivate us in the next hour to get it done. So those are my, my thoughts.
Director Hanson?
Just very, very quickly, the foundation, the Foundation for Douglas County Schools is seeking additional members. We have a couple of opportunities. If you, if you are unfamiliar with what the foundation does, big picture, we just work to enrich our district through investments, create student opportunities, opportunities for staff. I know everyone thinks they're on the best committees, but the foundation is genuinely an amazing group of people that I get to work with. And we provide grants to our teachers. Going out into our schools with a giant check is a lot of fun. Being a part of the Apple Awards, there's nothing better than getting to recognize and celebrate our incredible staff. And then we also do Building the Dream, which is our fundraiser. We, we have, we have several opportunities. If anyone is aware of any community leaders, business leaders, reach out to either myself or to our Director of the Foundation, Ashley Summers.
Okay, with that, we will move to, I'm sorry, we will move to item number 29, which is convene in an executive session. The recommendation is that the Board of Education adjourn the meeting and convene an executive session, a closed session, for purposes of holding conference with the district's attorneys to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS 2464024B regarding the following, the status of threat and litigation asserted by the district's former superintendent, Corey Wise, and pending litigation specifically Marshall versus Douglas County Board of Education at Al, pending in District Court, Douglas County, case number 2022 CV30071. Requested in the meeting will be all directors present. For the status of threat and litigation, it would be DCSD Counsel Mary Clemes, Deputy General Counsel Brian Condon, Joe Pharoah, and Brent Case. And for discussions regarding the Marshall case, it would be Superintendent Kane and Jeff Blue. Do I have a motion to adjourn and convene an executive session as stated?
So moved.
Motion by Williams?
Second.
Second by Hanson. I will now call the roll. Hanson?
Aye.
Meek?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Peterson? Aye. Ray?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Weineger?
Aye.
Passed, seven to zero. This meeting is hereby adjourned and the board will convene an executive session. Before we do, Counsel Clemes, you have a comment?
Just a clarification that Deputy General Counsel Brian Condon will not be present in executive session with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will strike him from the list of requested attendees. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting and convene an executive session after a, let's call it quarter of, so we can take a quick break.